If you have frontage on a town road, or if you have two buildings on the block four, or a lot line change, that's changing a lot of things.
So if you have frontage on a town road, or if you have pre-1955 structures, we're changing a lot of things.
We're losing all this stuff to A and B.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to our planning board meeting this evening. Thanks for being here. We have just a few administrative matters that we're going to clear up before we get into our public hearings at this point, so just please bear with us for a few moments. So, board members, you have an agenda before you at this point. I'd take a motion to approve said agenda.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. The minutes from August 11, 2014 are tabled at this juncture. We did put on the Nantucket Historic Commission to discuss the in-town bike path after having -- thank you, historical, sorry about that. What's going to happen is that after having a discussion with them on Thursday, we're going to reschedule this to a point in the not-too-far future here. I'll have staff make sure that they get in touch with you and set a date, because we don't want to allow this to run for another planning board meeting, but try to put something in place with them over the short period of time. We're going to sit down and have a discussion with them on the in-town bike path.
Is there any commission issue?
This will be coming before the planning board. Yep.
The bike path itself?
Yes. Thank you.
One more second.
Excuse me for one second. Yep. Are tabled. Minutes are tabled, John, yes. All right. Okay, so that's going to bring us to our public hearings at the moment. If you're here for Ken and Diane Oats, Brian Ryder, Michelle Whalen, or the Nantucket Theater Institute, those are continued to our next meeting. The first thing on our agenda is 18-14 Cumberland Farms Incorporated at 115 Orange Street. I know there are a number of people who have showed up tonight to give us some testimony on this. We've also received another -- a number of letters as well, too, so in the interest of trying to keep time at a good pace here, I'm going to ask that you please limit your comment to approximately three minutes' worth of time. You don't have to necessarily repeat what your neighbor has already said if you're in agreement with them. That's all you need to do, is say, "I'm in agreement with what was just said by such and such." Believe me, that helps tremendously. So without any further ado, for the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Elder.
Good evening, Sarah. I'll drift to the applicant, and with me is our surveyor engineer, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, Val Oliver, who's our designer, Richard Boyle, the regional manager for Cumberland Farms, is here, as are the store manager, Kay Murphy, and the assistant manager, Charlene Jenner. And they're happy to answer any questions that might come up during the course of the hearing. To be clear, we're here solely because Cumberland Farms is a formula business. This isn't a pre-existing, non-conforming formula business. The use of the property as a convenience store, and as currently configured and with the changes that we're proposing, is completely conforming to the bylaw in terms of parking, ground cover setbacks, loading zone, everything that's required under the bylaw is currently and will be met by the proposal. In fact, will be met better by the proposal than currently exists. So in the absence of the formula business, this would be a matter of right. But with the formula business, we're hearing to 139 12G as well as 139 33A. And I think with that, I'll just turn it over to Paul to kind of walk you through the plan, the changes proposed, and any questions you have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. I'm going to make reference to two or three boards tonight, and what I'd like to do is just give the board a reduced 11-by-17 copies of the actual boards. So the purpose of the application, as Sarah said, is a special permit with regard to the formula business exclusion, or formula business that is Cumberland Farms. We are not necessarily in the formula business exclusion district, but the business itself is, which requires a special permit for an expansion within the RC residential commercial zone, which we are located. Many of you are familiar with the site. It is the existing Cumberland Farms store, which is located at the intersection of Orange Street, which runs in a north-south direction, and William Street, which runs in this east-west direction. William Street now being a one-way street westerly from Orange Street. The site itself is a piece of property owned by Grace J. Rose, who is the trustee of Rose Nominee Trust. It is actually a lease parcel for Cumberland Farms, so the current owner, as I said, is Grace Rose. The site itself is located in the residential and commercial zoning district. It is located within the Mid-Island Planned Overlay District and also the Town Overlay District. It does abut on the westerly property line, the R1 residential zone, so the R1 residential zone coincides with our westerly property line. The properties to the north are in the RC zoning district, as are, I believe, the properties to the south. The RC zoning district sets forth minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, a frontage of 40, front yard setback is zero, rear and sideline setback of five, and it allows a maximum ground cover ratio of 50 percent. The lot itself is compliant with the zoning district. The lot itself is 19,374 plus or minus square feet. The site is located within a flood zone based on the new map being adopted by FEMA in June, so we are within land subject to coastal storm flowage, which in turn triggered us to file with the Conservation Commission a notice of intent. We are also subject to the Mass Stormwater Policy Act, which will be reviewed, and a permit issued through DEP for the drainage system that would be proposed as part of the new construction. The site itself is essentially a redevelopment, if you will, of the existing facility. The lot, as I had said, 19,374 square feet. The existing ground cover on the site is 13 percent, which includes the existing store. There is a storage trailer on the site, and this actually freestanding garage here is actually on this particular lot. It's partially on this lot, partially on the front lot here, which is another member of the Rose family, which owns this property to the north of the existing site. The site does contain -- does not contain wetlands, and as many of you know, as the abutters and the board knows, what's happening out there right now is basically we have a free-for-all with regard to the parking on the existing store, which we have parking along William Street, and then we have parking which occurs within the gravel area located to the west of the existing site. Now, the site does in some way, you know, deal with parking, not only generated by Cumberland Farms, but we have the intersection here, we have the two businesses at the intersection of 1 Cherry and 117 Orange. This is a facility here, which in case, you know, in some cases here, people park here, walk over to this facility, people park at this facility, walk to Cumberland Farms. So there are no agreements with regard to crossing of parking and shared parking and so forth, but it is a fact that does what happens out there, is we do have cases where people from this facility are parking over here, and I think vice versa with regard to what's happening out there, you know, as it exists today. The proposal itself is to construct a new -- tear down the existing facility and construct a new freestanding building at the intersection. I've got to make reference to another board, which is -- The existing store is approximately, I believe, a 1,700 or 1,800 square-foot building. That is this area here. This is the front landing of the stoop of the store. This is a wooden platform, a loading area, and this is that storage trailer in the back here. So I prepared this board to kind of give you a sense of really the sprawl that kind of occurs within the existing store here, and then what would be proposed at the end of the day if this proposal were to move forward. So again, front stoop, store, loading area here, and that's the storage trailer right there. The existing ground cover, as I said, is approximately 13 percent. The proposal would be to go to approximately 22 percent allowable ground cover in the RC district is the 50 percent requirement. The new footprint being approximately 3,700 square feet in area. So that board right there is simply to show the relationship between existing to proposed. The site itself with regard to the store, it's a retail stores and service with regard to the parking requirements. The net sales area within the proposed store is approximately 1768 square feet, which, based on the definition, would require nine spaces. Employees would be three. At one space per three employees would be one space. So within the application, the parking totals would be 10 required parking spaces under the bylaw. We're provided 16 standard, one accessible handicapped in this area, which, based on the number of spaces, would be the requirement for one handicap space, for a total of 17 spaces on the plan. The open space proposed would be 20 percent for a commercial structure. It is not an MCD, so it would be a 20 percent requirement for open space. The plan before you has approximately 30 percent, which does mimic what the MCD requirement is, although it's not a requirement to be at the 30. So approximately 30 percent open space, 22 percent ground cover with the proposal as you see it here. The existing site is serviced by public sewer, public water. Telephone, electric, and cable are all available to the existing site, and they would continue to be servicing the new facility. The drainage component of the structure mitigates for the pre- and post-development increase with regard to the adding of this paved area in the back of the lot. There is a subsurface contained drainage system with a metered outfall at Orange Street, which ultimately would go into the 21-inch drain line, which runs in a north-south direction on Orange Street, and then ultimately runs down Union Street and into Conso Springs. DPW does have plans to do an upgrade of the drainage system within Orange Street and also an upgrade of the tidal pond around Conso Springs. And in fact, there's an ENF form that -- an ENF that has just been issued, I believe, with regard to that work. Our work will be able to tie into that, but is not dependent upon it. So the drainage system here is contained on-site, outflow here, outflow into the Orange Street system. This system is being reviewed by the Conservation Commission and also by the state. What we're trying to do here is try to maintain, we're in the lower section of a watershed, which we have the camp property abutting here, we have the property to the north. We're allowed for free flow of any overland flow that continues in this area to come through our system, pass through the system, and then continue out without any restriction on these two properties, so as not to flood or pond water on those two abutting properties. That proposal will be back before the Conservation Commission in the next few weeks. The proposal itself, newly constructed store, a brick walkway off of Orange Street, brick walkway along the William Street profile here, brick walkway along the backside of the parking lot, the intent being a structured parking area here, one entrance and exit off of William Street. The main entrance of the store would be along the westerly building line, so this is where the intention would be for the main entrance to the store. Foot traffic, bicycle traffic, and so forth can continue to use the front entrance of the store, and then there'd be a secondary means of access for handicap purposes, which would run along the William Street section in this area here. And the plan that you have before you here has been modified somewhat based on concerns that were expressed by some of the abutters, the concerns expressed by the Conservation Commission with regard to the proposal itself. So some of the things that we've tried to incorporate into this component here is we've completely closed off the William Street, streetscape, if you will, so not to allow any type of parking along William Street. The other proposal we had had a small notch out here with paved area coming in this area. We've done away with that. This is a completely curved section of William Street with a green space here and a curved and brick sidewalk along that southerly building face right in that area there. The landscape for the project would be similar to what exists on Sparks Avenue, completely petreous paved parking lot. This area here would be petreous curving. The profile around the building itself would be a brick walkway, all with granite curving along the building, and along the William Street side would all be raised granite curving along that side there. So there'd be no opportunity for cars to park or do any type of parallel parking along William Street under this particular scenario. Lighting would be dark sky compliant, again, 10 to 12-foot high, shielded light poles within the parking lot. We have provided a landscaping buffer along this property line. There is an existing fence along here, and then we would probably provide some type of landscaping for trees within the William Street area here also, and we do have the opportunity to gain some green space along the front area here. We would not be changing the existing curb cut at Orange Street. This gray area kind of mimics where that curbstone is here, where the curbstone is here. That would still be a free-flowing curb cut in this vicinity here, similar to what exists today. Although the building would be out further, it's in an area where now sometimes those cars are parked along this area, and you still have those cars coming in, making this corner here, and making the turns coming in that area, along that area. That would not be changed, no change to tighten up or do anything different with that curb line on Orange Street. The building itself is currently before the Historic District Commission. This is the Orange Street profile, would be the building with a front porch along the front side here. This is the William Street building elevation, Orange Street porch running along William This would be the main entrance off of the westerly parking lot. CD units, air conditioning, air handlers, so forth, screened along the northerly property line adjacent to the other Rose property, and this would be that profile. Orange Street, front porch, building here with all the mechanicals, and CD units screened Rubbish, trash, recyclable, screened area within the parking lot in this vicinity here. Handicapped access, handicapped spot in this area here, handicapped access along into the backside of the store, or the front of the store essentially, if you will, and then means of secondary access along the brick walkway, a ramp in here, and then into the front door along the Orange Street profile. The loading zone. So under the current changes at town meeting, there is no specific requirement for loading zones. However, it was a particular common theme of most of all, the letters from the abutters, those people that live in the area that deal with the facility that's there now. There was a lot of mention about the loading area. So this plan here that I have before you and the handout that you have, what I've done here is this depicts a 12-foot by 35-foot loading zone within this area here, in front of the dumpster area. I mean, one of these spaces in this area here is going to be designated as an employee space, so that's what we've designated here as a loading zone. This loading zone can accommodate a truck parked in that position, and we'll talk right now for the purposes of what we're talking about, an SU-30, which would be a 30-foot straight truck, not a tractor-trailer, but a 30-foot delivery truck. And there are so many different sizes that come here. Cape Cod Express has one, a 30 footer. Cape Cod Express has a 40 footer. They have different sized vehicles, the Coca-Cola deliveries and so forth. Miles's Reese's truck that comes for the rubbish removal. All those trucks are a size that would accommodate coming into that facility here, parking there, and what we've done is expanded the parking lot to the west somewhat, so we still have a free 22-foot wide access here. So a truck could be parked in this vicinity here and still have cars come in and out of all these spaces without having an issue here. So we've left the space between the parking space and here wider to accommodate a particular location of that loading zone. Now, typically we'd have a parking space, a 22- or 24-foot aisle, and then another row of parking. This lot here has been expanded out in this direction here for the sole purposes of allowing a truck to be sitting there in that space, and cars come in and out and move out of here with free flow. 22-foot is an aisle width that is allowed under the current code. That could go to 24. We do have space over here. I don't think we're compromising the green space between ourselves and camp if we had to push this parking lot a little bit that way to open up that area. That could be done. With regard to deliveries, so Cumberland Farms has their essentially modified tractor-trailer that you've all seen, which kind of comes in. It comes two times a week. It comes on Tuesday, and it comes on Friday. It's a tractor-trailer, but it's not the size of your standard tractor-trailer. It's actually a modified one that they use just specifically for the island. It's 50 feet from bumper to bumper, and I'll kind of just show that, if you guys have all seen it and know what it looks like. But that's their truck that they deliver Tuesdays and Thursdays. So what happens there is that truck comes off the boat. It first goes to Sparks Avenue, unloads at Sparks Avenue. Once it's done at Sparks Avenue, it makes its way to the rotary, it comes down Orange Street northerly, and makes a left-hand turn onto William Street. If it came off a Union, I don't think it could make the right-hand turn coming in off of Union Street. So it comes in this way, makes the left-hand turn, it comes in, and then it backs up to the existing facility, and then that's how they load and unload that truck. From what I gather, at any given time, that could be a one hour, it could be a two hour. That truck is there. Once that truck is loaded, it's the driver, it's the store manager, and maybe one or two employees that unload and deliver that existing truck. These pictures were taken last Friday, and as you can see, there's the -- that's the truck up Williams, backs into the facility, loads and unloads. In this case here, there were no cars in the parking lot, so we had free access, but that's typically how he loads the existing store. Getting that truck in and out of the structure parking lot is just, number one, difficult because that's my loading zone there. If that truck were to come in under this scenario, it'd have to come in here, or he could come in here, make the sweep, work his way in here, and he'd occupy basically from the property line to there, then have to unload in this area. The only way he's then going to get out of here would be he'd have to back out of this facility, back up Williams, and then head out to Williams. The truck goes up Williams, takes a left as it gets up off of -- at the intersection, and it takes a left-hand turn and then makes its way out. You know, we've had numerous conversations with Cumberland about that truck, whether there's alternative ways to load this facility without using that truck. Under this scenario here, the SU-30, the 30-foot trucks, I don't think we have any issue with. We can make this work. The truck comes in, it comes out, and we can unload and unload. What I'm trying to do here is I've got a scenario by which we're trying to still utilize that tractor-trailer, and this scenario here is really the only way I can see that that could potentially work. And what this is, is this scenario takes the proposed facility that was shown on the other plan, the same parking lot, but what I've done is I've set up a scenario by which it's the same type of loading maneuver that they use now. The truck comes into the north, comes up Williams, and then I've designated this area the loading area, and then pushed my parking again under that same scenario with a 50-foot truck parked here, still having a 22-foot aisle with parking along that side, and then pushing these parking spaces over here, so that truck could be here, be unloading, and you'd still have free access in and out of the facility here with a 40-foot curb cut along William Street. That is a 12-by-35 main area, the cab with a 50-foot and a 22-foot space here. Truck would come in, back up similar the way it does, and then head off up Williams and continue on the way it typically does. It could also be used for the 30-foot, the 30-foot trucks. What this would require is, I'm still showing, I think, 17 spaces under this scenario. This bigger truck, they know when it's coming, and I've seen what they did on Sparks Avenue sometimes, they'll put a cone out, they'll block the area. They could limit, these two spaces here could be coned off. At the time a delivery is made, they would not be available spaces, but those then could be used. It would be a designated loading area, and this area, the truck could park in this area and then load and unload. Once that truck is gone, the cones come back out, and those again utilized as parking spaces. That's one scenario. It could just be designated a loading zone, and nothing could be put in there. What we then end up doing is losing two spaces off the total. We do have more spaces than are required under zoning. I think 17 spaces, I think is a good number based on kind of what I've counted of what parks on Williams, what this free-for-all is over here, that at any given time, under a worst-case scenario, you may have anywhere from 15, 17 spaces cars parking within the site. As I said, sometimes it's hard to tell because I know, I've watched on a couple of occasions, you know, employees have fast-forward, come in here in the morning, they park here in the morning, and then walk over, and then go to work for the day over here. As I said again, cars then park over here and walk over to Cumberland Farms, so it's not like it's exclusively, it's happening to both ends. But this is a scenario by which that standard truck that comes in two days a week for Cumberland Farms could continue to come in, load and unload in a similar fashion that it already does, and not block access to the existing parking lot. There will still be no obstruction here, although these cars will be gone here. This becomes building, this becomes a raised curb walkway. You can still make that, you can still make that turn, that left-hand turn, traveling north on Orange, and then come into this area here. So both of these scenarios set forth a loading zone under the scenario, and the way we've accomplished that is we do have some room along the westerly property line to expand this parking area here and deal with that particular loading zone. As Sarah had mentioned, with regards to the dimensional requirements, we are compliant with regard to ground cover, open space, setbacks. The MyPod does have a maximum five-foot front yard setback within the MyPod. We're compliant with that, and the intent of that is to keep the buildings up on the streetscape. So this corner here, the porch, is five feet off. We're five feet off over here. So although there is a, no, zero setback within the RC district, there is a maximum five-foot setback, and we have complied with that with regard to the location of the building and the store location here. The garage will stay as it is. It's not intended to be utilized. It's not utilized by Cumberland Farms, and the intent is to not utilize it. It's actually, there's a driveway that comes in off of Orange Street and accesses an overhead door here. So that garage, although it's on this property, is really utilized by this particular piece of property right here. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, and then, you know, listen, open it up, and we'll see what any of the abutters have to say, I guess.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Linda.
Paul, all the plans say gravel. You're telling us, both of these plans say gravel.
Well, if it's gravel, it's a reference, it's probably the underlay to the underlying existing. No, this is intended to be a paved, petreous parking lot. Curved, curved paved parking lot.
Because that would be incredibly annoying to all the residences to have that be gravel. Has the drainage plan been reviewed by Ed Pesci? Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, this is not an MCD. It's just a special permit for the expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use. It's not the type of application that we automatically collect engineering review money. So if the board wants to have it reviewed by Pesci Engineering, you'll have to discuss that with the applicant, because we don't have the funds to pay that.
Is that happening through CONCOM anyway?
Well, I would say yes. It's actually the DEP, the state DEP is reviewing. It's actually the DEP, the state DEP is reviewing the drainage plan as part because we're subject to, because we're in a Zone 2, we're not in the public wellhead watershed, in the public watershed recharge area, but we're in a Zone 2, which, and also the land's subject to coastal storm flow, which triggers us to meet the Mass Stormwater Policy Act, which the DEP is reviewing the drainage as part of that ConCom approval.
Okay.
And I will say that Mr. Camp has hired his own engineer, and we're providing, and it's Peter Ogburn from Hayes Engineering, and we're providing them any filings that we make, and he's doing, that's nothing to do with the town, but he's reviewing it on behalf of Mr. Camp.
That was one of my other questions, going to that side and along the backside. I know you have fence proposed. It hasn't come to the HDC, that part of it. But the screening of a parking lot that holds five or more parking spaces is pretty clear in the bylaw. I see you've got Leland Cypress on the, is the west side?
Yes.
I'm kind of concerned there's not enough screening. You've got new houses being built. That one's going to be torn down across the street. There's going to be another new residence there. One of the oldest residences in Mid Island is across the street from it. It's not being torn down. I'm kind of concerned about the lack of screening from all the residential property, which completely surrounds this except for directly across the street. So I think the screening plan needs to be worked on, but you also have the visibility issue pulling out onto Williams if there's some idiot, and there usually is every year, I ran into one, coming down Williams Street the wrong way, kids riding their bikes down Williams Street the wrong way, kids walking down the wrong way. And if you're pulling out going up the street, and that Leland Cypress right there is really close, I think you need to sort of flesh out the screening plan, not just for this board but for the HDC as well on that larger parking lot. So I just throwing that out there. I'm not necessarily comfortable with it all. I think another thing that needs to be pointed out to the neighbors is though the building is coming very close to the southerly property line along Williams Street, I guess that's the south.
Yes.
Williams Street, actually, the layout of Williams Street is what, another 10 feet away from the building? It looks like the building is looming right smack on Williams Street, and it's not. The traveled part of Williams Street's a little bit further away from it, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's tight in this area, actually. There's the building, you've got a four-foot walk, it's approximately, that's a five-foot setback right there from, from...
The property line.
The building to the property line, which will then be, become the curb line, the new curb line. Yeah. Williams is a, it's a public street, it's variable width, but, I mean, it's probably 12 feet. I mean, the layout is maybe 12 feet on this end, maybe 15 feet here, it's 12 feet here. So you've got, it's a very small, narrow street. I mean, I think it was actually probably a 1799 road. It was, it's, so it's, you know, it's a very narrow, narrow street. And there's not a lot of opportunity here. The street line here is almost right up against the back of the curb on the 117 Orange and 1 Cherry Street property.
I think that's one of the concerns that was mentioned before is how close it is to Williams Street and how much, how looming it is, whereas right now, because of the side parking lot, it's quite, quite far away from the actual layout of Williams Street. Bike racks? Do you have any proposal for bike racks?
Yeah, there'd be, again, it would mimic what we would did, what we did at Sparks Avenue. Would, there'd be, you know, in the front area here, there'd be bike racks. The opportunity for landscape within this area here, like that, which was brought up by one of the Butters with regard to not have, you know, what the concern was, if we have a notched-out area, someone's going to park there. I mean, and I totally agree with, you know, what the comments were there, so that's why we, this area would be, you could have an opportunity for bike racks in here, up in this area here, and then, so yeah, that would be the plan, would be the same thing we did on Sparks.
I'm just a little concerned about the bike racks in front of the building for multiple reasons. You mentioned lighting is 10 to 12 feet in the parking lot where they don't have any lighting next to those residences now. I think you need to look at that really carefully as to 10 to 12-foot light poles will still generally throw off a lot of light to those going up Williams Street as far as the residences are concerned.
Well, the dark sky compliant requires that we have a zero light trespass at the property line, which, again, the Sparks Avenue, if you go there at night, it's not, it's a very low lit. In that case, you know, even the gas pumps, the gas station, I think the site itself was done pretty well with regard to the lighting. We had the fees on the one side that were concerned, the Butters on the backside, and that's one thing at least we haven't heard over there was that the, again, there'd be zero light trespass along all the property lines. And it wouldn't take much to light this, it'd only probably be a few light poles, maybe a few building lights on here, that all be down shielded, all dark sky compliant.
I just know if you could do it less than 10 feet, but that's something you're going to have to do.
Yeah, I'm going to say, I think I spec 10 to 12 at Sparks, but I think they're probably, they're probably 10 footers, and that's from the ground to the top of the actual, the top of the unit.
Second floor space on this?
No.
Okay. How much taller is the building getting?
We lowered it a little more than I needed.
So it's not much taller than, just to give the neighbors some perspective, it's not much to...
It's about a foot nine.
And how much is it now?
Yeah, now they don't know.
It's not getting appreciably higher.
No.
It's getting, the first floor level's coming up because of the flood plain, or you...
It's actually, it's pretty close.
Pretty close?
It's going to stay pretty much where, the first floor will stay pretty much where it is. It is above the flood zone.
So...
And no foundation. It's just, it's a slab, slab on grade.
Okay.
No apartments, no housing, just the store.
And I'm still, I appreciate the fact that you're giving us so many parking spaces. I think that's great. I am concerned about the 22-foot width. I know it's been changed in the bylaw. The bylaw for 30, 40 years was 24-foot aisle width, which even in some cases, depending on if it's not angled or angled parking, is a real crunch with that truck there. And you know, the standard loading zone space used to be 14 by 35. With that truck there, those guys going to the left of that are going to have a heck of a time because they're not angled parking, trying to get in and get out.
Yeah.
So if anything, the whole parking, if that loading zone stays there, and I'm not telling them in favor of that, you might have to push those out two feet going west, the whole space. I can't really see that from here.
Yeah.
Even with my glasses on, I couldn't see it. I love these colored things, visual aids.
Let me kind of give you the scenario here, this, because I, personally, I think this is the better alternative. I mean, and it just kind of came about after me following that truck around for the last three weeks. This scenario here, Linda, is the full loading zone here, which is 50, which would be a 50-foot space here for that tractor-trailer to be sitting here and unloading the store. He comes up, he backs in, and goes here, the 22-foot aisle width and then the space. I've got enough room. I think I can still, I've got plenty of green space here because this would all be natural with the Leland Cypress here, the Leland Cypress here. This could go to 24, it could go to 20. That aisle could be clearly, there is room to move the parking lot this way. I don't have open space issues, so pulling that that way, that can be made 24 without any problem. And then personally, I think this scenario here, then we're not up into the site here. The only truck that comes in here is going to be Miles's truck to do the trash removal.
Because that would be something, as I say, I don't have a little colored version here, and I can't really see it, but I know the concept that you're talking about.
Yeah.
For me, it's critical to have a loading zone. It's critical to me not to blend the loading zone with the parking. I think the minute you run the truck into the parking lot and have to back in, back out, it's going to be a nightmare, and somebody's going to be crunched somewhere. So I'm much more in favor of trying to rework the building or that corner of the building or rework the parking lot to run it in so it goes straight up, straight, you know, comes in, goes back, goes straight up the street.
Yeah.
What I would prefer, they were using a smaller truck, for sure. Not a split axle but a box or something along those lines. I would much prefer that. They would have to make the exchange obviously over at the other one.
Yeah.
To get the stuff in it. So that's really my, my main concern is that loading zone and the screening and the lighting and the surfacing for the sake of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Not the fact that there's not going to always be a store there.
Yeah.
The rest of it will take up tomorrow night at the HDC, I'm sure.
I will say one thing with regard to that, and from what I've seen, and Nat probably knows better, and members of the board, maybe anybody out here that maybe drives a truck, but it's almost like that, that truck has more maneuverability than the SU-30. Even though it's 50 feet, he can get in and around tighter spots because he can jack that front, you know, he can move that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when he gets to the end of Williams and he makes that left-hand turn, that's, I mean, he's coming close to that pole as he makes that left-hand turn, but it seems like even though it's a longer truck, he's got more maneuverability with it because he's got that split at the cab.
I just want to make sure that we don't tie up access getting in and out off of Orange Street as well.
Yeah.
No matter what direction he's coming from.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I haven't seen that truck, but I don't think a truck or even the SU-30, I don't know if they can even make that corner coming this way. I don't know. You know, like anything, like most of the stuff over here, you know, people get used to kind of what works and how they do it, and it just becomes a format. They know he's going to come and deliver, they put the cones out. They know he's going to be, come a certain time, you know, he's going to make that sweep coming off the rotary. But for that truck to come down Union and try to ever make it this way, I don't think it could do it now, and I don't think it, it won't be able to do it, I don't think, in the future. As I said, with regard to that corner, we've left, you know, that curb opening here and here, we've left those the exact same way they are. Now, I know the town is presently looking at the Union Street, Orange Street intersection. In fact, I provided these set of plans because I think they're also looking at this whole area here as it comes down.
Cutting the hole.
Because they wanted to know how close I was to the front, where the porch was and so forth, because they're starting to look at this whole, this whole intersection and then coming down, coming down Orange Street.
Okay, that's it for now.
Okay. Board members, anyone else? Go ahead, Nat.
Yes, Paul. I talked to the driver the other day. I've known him for years. He's been coming here, the same guy for a long time. That's a 36-foot trailer with, total length is 50, but the trailer's 36, and the wheels are slid forward all the way. Just for everybody's, you know, just so everyone understands, the trailers like you see from Cisco and US Food, their total length is 38 feet, okay? They have a 28-foot trailer, they can fit four more pallets of stuff in this trailer versus the little one. You know, the one, like if they used a Cisco-type trailer to be a little easier, they'd have to make three trips a week, which is another two grand, you know, whatever it costs. So there's a reason that they do it this way. It's an economic thing, and they just, as Paul said, it does make it. It works. It's just tight, but it works. It's not like they're delivering on like to Fair Street or something. It's kind of, you know, it's no different than getting into the gas station with these semis. So, you know, I agree with Linda said. I mean, Paul, if the neighbors are satisfied, I mean, they know how it works now, you're essentially fixing what's already happening with that other plan, correct? You're sort of making what's happening now formalized and getting it off the street, making enough space to back that truck up in a legit spot that's away from the traveled way, and it's much easier because he's already sort of sliding into that space. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's right. This mimics exactly how he loads and unloads the store now.
Yeah.
And ultimately, what the benefit becomes is now, but we've eliminated the Williams Street parking.
Yeah, you're not having to get all those cars out of there. He's going to be able to drive right in.
And I mean, that's the area where, you know, that's the refrigerated truck, so when he comes, I don't think that truck shuts off.
No, it's the reefer runs.
So, you know, having it back here, I felt was, and number one, I didn't like having him, I don't think he, if he went back here, I mean, I spoke to him, he wasn't too keen on the fact that, the way, if he even had a comeback here.
Yes.
He comes up, he backs in, he unloads, and boom, he's on his way all the way.
He's trying to make, see, this is the other thing too, and everybody needs to understand, I kind of know how they do it. They come on the 9:15, so they get here at 11:30. They're trying to make that 1:45 for eight boat of a 2:45. He's making two stops now instead of one. So he's kind of like, you know, it's hard for them to do it. So, Paul, can you just go back to the straight drop thing? In this plan though, not in the other one, what is your plan? I mean, are you...
This here?
No. The discussion about the 30-foot truck or 28 or whatever, what is, just for open and transparency, what is the basic idea of that? Is to unload at the other place and bring a small truck to this place?
No. What Cumberland Farms would like to do is continue to do what they're doing now.
I know, but we talked...
Bring that same truck, two days, two days a week.
You've got mentioned twice, okay.
And then that's ultimately what they'd like to do. Now, you know, then you, again, I think Coke comes as a separate truck.
Oh, they have...
Miles comes, you know, to do the trash. I think, is there a bread truck? I mean, I don't know if there was a bread truck. I mean, you know, I've seen a Cape Cod Express truck pulled in there one day when I was there. So there's any number of different trucks, but I think what Cumberland is trying to do is keep everything within, they keep everything within that tractor-trailer.
Yeah.
And unload both stores.
Right.
So the other trucks, I think it's a quicker operation. They're in, they unload, and they're out. The Cumberland truck takes a little bit longer, you know, because it requires the driver, a couple employees, and then they load and unload depending upon how much they need at a given store. Now, that having been said, there's more, you know, it's a bigger store, but there's more storage here. They've got that trailer that's here that would be gone, you know, there's no, this is the store, no all, no trailer, and they would load off the, you know, load in this back area, you know, similar to what they do right now. But again, we don't have a basement here, we've got a basement at Sparks Avenue. You know, they've got storage at Sparks in addition to the store itself. They rent space in that basement, so...
The other thing I want to talk about, Linda's point about continuing the sidewalk, I totally agree with that. You should, you should look at that to the left of the parking lot. I don't have a little pointer.
Oh, in here?
No, on Williams Street.
Yeah.
The other side. Continuing it towards...
The west.
Yeah, right there. Getting rid of that, you know, screening or whatever to continue the sidewalk along there.
Oh, oh, maybe like here and then across there.
Yeah, yeah. And also maybe get rid of that green at the front corner of, you know, where Williams and Orange, and make it, just brick it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, I mean, that's going to be like, I know we don't use outside telephones anymore, like they're, you know, obsolete, but people are going to be like hanging out there.
Yeah.
That's the spot that's going to be like, you know, the store's going to be more popular, but I still think everybody's going to be spread out. I don't think there's going to be like more people going here. I think it's just two stores. It's that simple.
Well, you know what, we actually, that, the scenario that we did on Sparks, which was, it almost acts as a natural stock line. You have the, you have the bike path.
Yeah, right.
And that granite, which would act as a natural...
And the delineations and, you know, I know how we did the other store.
Yeah.
Where we have some raised curb and some flush curb and when necessary. I mean, flush curb and by the street is certainly better. You know what I mean? But I know we have water issues in this area too, and I know you're trying to keep the water from going into the building, but this building's higher, so that might not be a problem.
My concern here is, is if I don't have a raised curb there, it's like I'm walking on the sidewalk and then I'm in the street.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You tend, the curb is there, you're going to stay up on the curb.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And quite honestly, somebody could come, it would be, you know, standard six-inch-high curb, but that's really what the intent was right there, was to keep them, and obviously we don't have a line of volage, no one's going to allow us to put a line of volage down that, down the side of the street. But it's no problem, I mean, open space, just for those of you unfamiliar with the regulations, so you're allowed, brick walkways can count as open space up to 10% of your lot area, so, so you get credit for the brick as an open space component if it's brick as opposed to concrete. So open space isn't an issue.[1668.88] If this all became brick, if this became a walkway in here, not an issue at all, I think it would probably look better. Quite honestly.
I'm done. Anyone else on the board at this point?
Go ahead, Mr. McGlaughlin. Seventeen parking. Seventeen parking, what is minimum for this lot? According to zoning laws?
He said nine.
Ten.
Ten. Ten.
Okay. Ten.
Was there anything else, John?
Yeah, no, I have, I'll bring them up.
Carl, do you have something for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for staff, or fellow board members. Is there a way to build a sidewalk on Williams Street, up to Pleasant Street?
Not without, not without takings, there, I mean, I think, you know, at least here, it would be a place to step up out of the road.
Yeah.
For, for a distance. We would have to, we would have to get either easements or widen the road in order to do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, you got it.
I was just thinking about driving in and out of there. If that truck is parked there, on.
Where?
The new scenario.
Okay.
If you're pulling out of that parking lot, that truck is gonna block your visibility of people coming up Williams Street. Because you can't see around that truck.
Well, he's gonna be.
How far off, beyond the exit, is he?
I mean, that's ten, I mean, that's a ten, that's a nine-foot wide space here.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna be in front of him, you're gonna be in front of the truck, your sightline is gonna be in front of him, you have to be out that far. If he's here, again, that's nine feet from here to here, the curb line is out here.
All right, as I say, I can't see the details from where I'm sitting at all.
You'd have to be, you'd be out far enough here to do that. That natural break that you were talking about here, whether it's a work, kind of script in here, would be helpful to that lot, it's a natural stop line. But you'll be out far enough here that that truck wouldn't, wouldn't block you.
So, people coming up Williams, taking it right into the parking lot, and people coming out the parking lot, going up Williams, would be able to see each other?
You're gonna still have, it's, it's gonna, just picture this as, the truck wouldn't be, you still have a twenty-four-foot wide aisle, so it's gonna act like a natural entrance and exit, it's just that the truck is gonna be parked on that, on that one end of it.
You still have your standard twenty-four-foot wide aisle here to come in and come out.
And as far as unloading, are you still planning, I know this came up with the HDC, um, you're still loading and unloading through the people door?
Yes.
And not through a storage door going in directly into the storage area, which is on the other side of the building?
No, actually, they load, the store gets loaded, basically, the, the stock that comes in, basically goes right into the, into the store. There's walk-in coolers, there's shelving, there's, I mean, basically, the store itself is the storage, there's no, you know, the, there's no storage like they have at Sparks, there's no basement, that everything's, which is, is in the shelving, or in the, the coolers behind, behind the shelving. This here, it, but we are still planning that one single access here. If that was to go away with, we, right in this back corner here, there's a walk-in cooler. If, if the second door was a requirement, that walk-in cooler would go away, and that would be your, there would be a separate delivery door, there's ability to have a separate delivery door here.
But we just, that would be internally, that do away with the walk-in cooler on the backside of the store.
Hey, hey.
I'm gonna cut to the mic, and give me a second, John. Just trying to get to the right voice.
So, this area here, so that's the, this is the parking lot, this is that common access, which is, you know, public access, load and unload, that right there is that walk-in cooler, that could become a door, if necessary, but they'd have to then do away with that walk-in cooler.
Anyone else on the board have anything? Hold on for one second. Y'all set, Mr. Santos?
Well, um, sorry, I just did point out, too, because I asked that specifically, I said, do you have, is this an operation facility that you have, do you load and unload in the common access and other facilities off-island, and the, the answer was yes, that we do have stores, that we do, we do it both ways.
But, the stores that I've seen off-island, have double doors. This has a single people door in the back, and it doesn't have a double door, and I remember one incarnation of the previous sketch, months ago, it had two doors coming in off the parking lot, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Okay.
And I still think that's feasible, but that's up to you guys.
Hang on for a second, yeah, Mr. McGlaughlin, go ahead.
In my knowledge of driving semis around, rolling down the people.
As my knowledge is driving the semis, you have a loading area twelve by thirty-five, now the, what they call a straight drop is a shorter one, that comes down the lot in the winter, because you don't need all that length, but in the summer, I've seen many times that semi has parked there, unloading, and that's fifty to fifty, fifty-four to fifty-five feet long. Now, I, my question is, to staff, if you have a loading area twelve by thirty-five, are you allowed to be twenty feet beyond that, or should you make the loading area larger? That's, that's, if there's a big, long truck, so you got twenty-foot difference.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you, you all have the ability to set the loading zone to the size that you see fit, there isn't a minimum and maximum anymore. You, you basically, A, determine if one is needed, and B, decide on the size. So, those are the changes in the bylaw, and it's meant to look specifically at each project, what type of vehicles they're using. So, if you think it needs to be bigger, then you can make it that.
Uh, yeah, I want to go to comment on that, that, knowing that another summer's coming, and it does every year, I guess, and usually, they use that thirty, fifty-five footer, so maybe we should, at this time, cover their access, and make it, try to find a way of making it fifty, fifty-five feet, which would alleviate a problem next year coming back in and saying, hey, we need more room, and everything's already been done. Thank you.
John, their truck is actually, it's a fifty-foot bumper-to-bumper, and we actually have enough space for that, so that's thirty-five with a fifteen-foot here, so, this could be clearly demarcated as a fifty-foot, twelve-by-fifty-foot loading zone, without any problem, and then that's what this design would accommodate. This is specifically designed to accommodate their tractor-trailer that comes.
Where is the twelve-by-fifty?
You don't have.
You don't have to bring it over.
Just bring it up.
Okay.
The scenario here is twelve-by-thirty-five, but that's an extra fifteen feet here, and then the alley, so that fifty-foot would be right there. So, what would happen, you know, the truck would come up Williams Street, back into this spot, and then still be here with the ability, the cars to come in and out, and still access that parking lot.
My other question, if you put fifty-foot truck there, you got fifteen-foot, a lot of people driving up Williams Street might say, hey, I, I can't, I don't want to try to get in there, not get out, you're gonna create a problem there for the public, now just a suggestion, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? I'm gonna, Carl, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Santos, have you considered moving the handicap spot number two, flip it down to where number three is, and then have a loading zone where one and two are currently, and take the cab of the truck away from Williams Lane, Williams Street, have the truck back up, and then jackknife into that spot?
No. The problem I have with that is the truck has then gotta, he's gotta be, either be backing out onto Williams, or, or coming into the site, there's just not enough room to do it, and with only the single handicap spot, it's gotta be van-accessible, so to be van-accessible, I have to have the striping on, um, the passenger side, you will, of that particular spot.
Okay.
So, if I had my handicap spot here, my striping would have to be here.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I'm sorry, I had one other question. No, I just caught it, uh. Yeah, let me find it, yeah. Oh, God. It's bypassed me. I lost it on that, thank you.
Yep, I'll come back. All right.
I'm sorry, I got it. There are about a dozen letters of criticism, and I've always felt that I tried to listen to neighbors, and in this case, I would think that you should try to go out and talk to the Detroit neighbors, and bring us all of a, uh, area petition, that they withdraw, of course, some of most of their questions, and get this squared away, according to our regulation. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think we're gonna hear from some of them tonight, John, and I think this, this scenario, I think the plan that we're kind of, is evolving, is in direct relationship to what a lot was in that, within those letters. A lot of the operational stuff, I'm sure you'll hear about, specifically, maybe site-specific, but the, the loading zone, the streetscape, the curbing, I think, the changes, as this is evolving, is a direct result of, of those letters, and what the people in the neighborhood have, have said.
My wife and I owned a property, my wife and I owned a property for nineteen years when Cumberland first came in there, and that's another problem that we ran into, for nineteen years, they drove me out, I went out of town, so I'm just saying, the traffic and everything is here, not just in the daytime, it's in light, thank you.
You know, I mean, I will also say that, you know, there are a lot of familiar faces here, that some of them, I've actually, you know, met with Mr. Camp and his engineer, I've spoken to the Abboters to the north, anybody that's contacted me, or willing to have any questions, or ask for plans, of, again, I'm here, you guys know what, what I'm doing, we're trying to, obviously, you know, working on behalf of what Cumberland Parks wants to do, but I think there's been a concerted effort to try to, at least, you know, try to keep everyone, you know, satisfied here, so, I'm available to anybody that has any questions, and as I said, I've worked with at least two or three of the Abboters, I know Julie Young, has, right from the start, has been very, pretty vocal about it, the closing off of the streetscape, the, the location of the loading and so forth, and I know she couldn't be here tonight, I've met with her at the coffee shop on a number of occasions, just to kind of go through her concerns, so.
Did you get a copy of all the letters that came in?
I surely have, John, I've read every one of them.
Have you contacted them?
No, and we wouldn't, we're not gonna spend the time to contact everyone in the letter, number one, they're gonna be here, but we do take into account what the letter says, a lot of them said they wouldn't be here, but we've acknowledged, I've read every letter, and aware of every issue that's been raised.
Thank you. Just for the record, at this point, I, for the fun of it, I did go through the number of letters that came in, there's really only seven people who have commented on this, if you go through our packet, it can be a little confusing, I understand, because there are multiple copies, multiple instances of those letters coming in, from various sources, but they've all pretty much said the same thing.
Yeah, I think there's a common theme to all the letters, too.
Right, and I just wanna, I just want the record to be accurate, and reflect what, what really was before us at this point, as, as a conjecture. I do have a few questions for you, but I think respectfully, staff may cover some of the territory I want to cover as well, too, so, let me turn it over to Andrew and Leslie, and then I'm gonna reserve comment till the end here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, one, one comment on the trees, the Leyland cypresses proposed, I, I would ask the board maybe to consider, and ask the applicant, maybe not planting them in such an evenly spaced way, like a more natural planting scheme, and not, in different varieties, I think, the, the, the single row planted like this tend not to look so good after a while. I think, too, there, what kind of planting is gonna be happening, I mean, I agree with Mr. Lowell's comment about bricking that corner, I think that's really important to tie the sidewalks all together, but the other area, what specifically would go in that, in the area that wouldn't be bricked? So, between the porch and Orange Street, having some details about, again, what kind of plants, and everything would be important. Uh, that's all I have for now.
All right, great. Just a few things I want to bring before you at the moment, I, I, how many spaces are currently provided there? I know, that's, but I, I'm gonna ask.
I, I, if I had to guess, I think it's around fifteen to seventeen.
Okay.
If, if you excluded the, the two people that use it as a commuter lot, and then disappear for the day, or the, you know, I mean, I think there's, I think there's ten, there's, I think there's ten spaces at One Cherry and One Seventy, I think there's ten spaces here.
Yeah.
And then, from what, I, I, anywhere from fifteen to seventeen.
Okay.
But.
It, it's not a trick question, but it is to establish a little something for the record, because, having been down there a few times, it's, it's interesting to see how people will configure themselves into one row, and then another row, double stack, and still make it work, but, I'm kind of heading toward what's currently there, and how does that work, how's this gonna work, and, and do we even have enough spaces still to have to deal with things? Just to go back over a few things, I have to agree with Linda and Nat, that bricking in that sidewalk, and extending it back up Williams, as far as we possibly can, to your property line, makes a lot of good sense. Andrew, I, through you, I don't know if there's any wisdom in securing easement street or bike or sidewalk path through, through the front on, um, Orange Street, just for future use, with some of the projects that are before us.
There's a, oh, I'm sorry, on which, which side?
On Orange Street.
Yeah, there's a plan to change the curve, to, to make that curve more gradual.
Yeah.
At the intersection of, um, Orange and Union.
Yeah.
Yes, the former, which is being implemented now.
Okay, but I'm just asking, I don't know if there's any wisdom in trying to secure anything with this applicant, in terms of, of easements into the area. Can I let staff have the table, please?
Before we close the hearing, we'll have more information on that.
Okay, great, I, I just appreciate looking at us, so we don't miss that opportunity. I like what you're doing with that loading zone, although I'm somewhat skeptical about how well that's gonna function in terms of your traffic coming in and out, and I, I think you may have to back up a little further into your green space to make that work. Considering that there's a number of different service vehicles, F-150s that go into that area as well, too, it's not just conventional, um, cars that are going in there, I, I think that needs a serious look at. I, I might ask, and I don't know if we can do this, Andrew, is it possible to have our traffic engineer take a look at this? I just want to get this on the record.
Yeah, if the applicant agrees to provide a traffic report, or funds for that, it's.
Yeah, I understand, but, and does staff feel as though there's some prudence to doing that? Sorry to put you on that, or do you want to, do you want to think about this between now and next meeting?
I, I think we, we would think about it, contact our, um, traffic consultant, and see if they feel warranted.
Okay, I, I think at a minimum as well, too, is that once, we can always reopen a public hearing if we have to later, but I think as well, you, you may want to establish, we may want to have traffic counts established there for at least two years, from when this project finally wraps itself up, so that we're making sure we've done the due diligence necessary, and I see Mr. Santos thinking.
Well, I will, I will tell you this with regard to traffic.
Yeah.
This store is not gonna generate trips, if you will, so when we think of a traffic report, we spend that money to do, it's, this is, cars that are already on the road, we're not generating trips, it's more, I think what your concern is, is more, is maneuver, maneuverability of it. Which is not traffic count-related. Quite honestly, I think what's gonna happen, too, is, the new design is actually gonna change the dynamic of who now comes and doesn't come to the store. The landscaper with his trailer is not gonna come here anymore, because he's gonna have no place to park, he's not gonna be able, it's, you know, the guys that now come up, they park the trailer in the, in the gravel area, and then they walk into the store, they can't be serviced by this facility anymore, they're gonna have to go to Sparks Avenue, park along the side, you know, it's just, the way this is gonna be structured is gonna limit who comes and doesn't come, and those guys, like I said, the landscapers with the truck, the trailer on the back, there's no place for them, there's not, we can't design for it, and they're not gonna be able to come in and come out of this site and, and use it. Similar to the guy with the, you know, a boat on the back of it, he's not gonna pull in here and then block all these spaces and come into the store. So, I think from somewhat, that the layout itself is gonna dictate who does or who doesn't use the store. I'm then gonna maybe go to Sparks Avenue, and then I have, at least over there, I've got some room along the side of the building to park, at the pumps and so forth, and then go in and do what I gotta do, so.
Maybe a traffic count isn't the right way to deal with this, but I, I do think that we need to be prudent enough to reexamine and see how it works, I mean, never saying never at the moment.
Yeah.
That, that one doesn't always sit well with me. So, I, I will agree, you may be adjusting the traffic dynamics based upon what that backlot's gonna look like, but I, I just like some assurance that, that really is what's, what's happening on the ground after we're all said and done. Again, I think that's something we can kind of examine over the course of the next month, it's worth the time, and maybe address it in a slightly different light.
Well, I, granted, I think, under the, you know, the other facility was an MCD, and you had that period, because, you know, that whole second exit there was a, kind of, we went round and round, you know, about the, the second means of access on that one, so we, we had a two-year period, which we looked at that, and made sure there was no, no issues with regard to that. Again, this is more of a special permit that, I mean, this has become a site plan application before you, but essentially, we're here for the, the formula business, which has kind of been lost amongst all, you know, and I, and I understand, you know, the Abboters' concerns, they're not really, it's the formula business, it's the, it's the traffic and the layout and so forth, so.
Diane.
But I think you can condition this special permit, if I'm not mistaken, in any way you see fit.
Yeah, I just, I just want to get it up on the table at this point, like I said, I, I think there's time for us to, to have a little bit more fruitful discussion about, Diane?
Being that I'm up and down Orange Street all the time, because it's main entrance out of where I live, that the truck backing in to unload causes minor traffic holdup, the landscapers pulling a trailer behind them cause more backup than the, uh, Cumberland's truck, which always surprised me from the size, but they have it pretty well under control, so, it's not one thing, that particular thing doesn't hit you over the head is being a major problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe?
One quick thing, Paul. As it's variable width, you think it'd be a good idea to show the actual width of it?
I calculate, I, I've got a plot now with, that shows the actual layout, the, the other layout of, on the other side. And I'll add that to the plan, because we got, I got questioning it this weekend, I said, you know, how close are we? And, I mean, we're right up against the curb here, there's a little bit of play here, but I'll have the other street line plotted on the, on the next plan.
Great. Go ahead, Nat.
Paul, how much of the new building is refrigeration and storage floor space? Just as some, that, that needs to be, you know, just because the building's bigger doesn't mean it's like start and shop versus what it is now. There's no storage there.
Yeah, I can submit, I mean, I think, I've got, I don't have the floor plan here, but the way those coolers are set up now is, you've got, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, the front, the public access areas, you open up the cooler and you reach in, but then there's also storage that occurs behind, behind that shelving now.
Okay.
And then the way it's set up now is there's, basically, when you walk in here, there's public restrooms here, there's a, a cooler in this area here, and then when you get into the display area, this whole line of coolers along here and along, you know, the entrance way in here, the backside of the coolers is all storage.
So there's a lot more?
Oh, definitely. I mean, there has to be, because they can't, without any ability to store, they have to store within the facility itself.
Public restrooms?
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks. Anything else, board members? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open the public hearing in half a second. When you get up, I'd please ask you to identify yourself with the record, and also, if you're in the butter, or what your relationship is into doing this. Like I said, I would appreciate if you tried to keep your comments to, to about a three-minute mark. If you agree with something that your neighbors have said earlier, you don't necessarily need to repeat it, just say, "I agree with whoever." And that's true, right, because I did, I'm glad you brought that up, Linda, because one of the letters said, "Please read into the testimony," and that won't happen, because we do have it. We do have it. Okay, so, I'll ask you to step up to the microphone. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Just raise your hand afterwards, I don't catch you. If I don't, let me know. Hi.
Hi. My name's Alice Rocha.
There you go. That's perfect.
Okay. My name's Alice Rocha. I'm a co-owner of Seven Williams Street. My husband and I co-own Seven Williams with my daughter, and my daughter and my two grandchildren live at Seven Williams. I'm also serving my 12th year as a planning board member in Burnsville, New Jersey. So I will do my best to keep this short, I understand, point of view. I mean, it seems as if the board, my concerns, a great, a great many of them had to do with, with traffic turning ratios. I was initially surprised that a traffic engineer was not required for this application, because it seemed to be such a large, a large part of the concerns of the neighbors. And I think that it certainly has been covered pretty thoroughly tonight. But my concerns right now are, were, it was just brought up, that a lot of the customers of this, of this store are landscapers with trailers behind. And I really just did not, I was not able to see how they were actually able to make a turn, especially with any kind of delivery truck in place. There was no way that they could make a turn and leave. And I was also concerned with sight lines and things like that. Now, I, the board seems to be addressing all of those things. But what the board is not addressing, and what continues to be a huge concern of mine and my, my daughter and her family, are the amount of increased traffic on Williams Street. And that there is so narrow that there is absolutely no safe place for a pedestrian to walk or a bicyclist to walk, you know, to ride. It is just way, way too narrow, and I think sidewalks and certainly speed bumps should be considered. And I don't know how much you can make this applicant responsible for any of that, but, but to allow them to increase the, the amount of, of business that this store is going to do, because it's going to be a much better store, I think is, is being irresponsible toward people who live on Williams, who have to, or people who have to, you know, traverse Williams on their way to work or, or whatever. It just seems very dangerous. I also, it was, came to my attention that this is part of that Mid-Island Planned Overlay District. And I was reading the, the criteria that you have for that. And it says, "As stated in your zoning code, the MiPOD, Mid-Island Planning Overlay District's purpose, among others, is to increase safety to pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists, to relieve traffic congestion, and to create a pedestrian-friendly environment for everyone, but is specifically noted for year-round residents." This applicant, the application fails to meet these objectives. The other thing I wanted to note about the porch, which I don't think, I mean, I know this board doesn't address aesthetics. I don't find that porch particularly appealing looking, but my concern in front of this board is the use of that porch. Is that porch going to be, is this going to turn into a fast-food restaurant? Is that porch going to have tables? Why is the porch there? Is, I think, something that should be of, of concern. And I was concerned about the minimum of landscaping, but I think that's all going to have to be worked out with the, with the traffic plan. I think that's it. As I say, the MiPOD, the Mid-Island Planning Overlay District speaks specifically to citing of buildings and streetscape designed to promote consistency and quality within the neighborhood zone. This application does not seem to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mark, I'll come to you, and then I'll, well, I'll let this young lady go first. You're quite the gentleman, Mark. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teri Dian, and I am the owner of Fast Forward, not of the building, but of the Unfortunately, this was the first day that I heard about this. I've been busy, and no one's approached me, as the owner of the business, about this, and my landlord, Susan Fisher, called me today and said there was a meeting. So I'm kind of trying to catch myself up on this whole project. My concern, and it's hard for me to tell from here, where the parking from Cherry Street and Orange Street video, Fast Forward, turns into where it is right now on the current building, on the plan? If there's a truck there, when there are many trucks there, it's difficult to turn now from the Fast Forward parking lot onto Williams Street. The Fast Forward parking lot is now the throughway from Cherry to Williams Street, since Cherry Street has turned to a one-way. Excuse me. So those landscape trucks, if they're coming from Pleasant Street, are coming through our parking lot and going onto Williams Street, and currently, they're taking up a very long parking spot angled on Williams Street. And they're using all three, well, it used to be three properties, but now all of the customers use both properties. And I don't know if 50 feet for a truck, they always have a slide-out, they always have the ramp coming off the back of the truck, there's a, if 15 feet, is it behind the truck as the loading zone? Or does, that kind of makes me wonder how much space around the truck, behind the truck specifically to unload it, is needed in order to make it passable for customers from the parking lot to go where they're loading into the building? Because they're not going to want to walk around the front of the truck to go down Williams, they would want to go towards the store. So how much space is between the truck and the store? I guess is part of my question on that. So that was just one of my concerns tonight. Had I had more notice, I would have stopped and got plans and started to actually look at them, but I didn't, and nobody from this project ever even approached me and told me what was going on. So I can blame my landlord for that, but, so, that's just one of my concerns, and I guess I would, you know, look to think about that. As far as the Fast Forward parking, the employees, it's been like that for the last 28 years, and it used to be Orange Street Video parking back there, too. So if that's going to change, then that's fine, I just need to have a heads-up on a few little things. So that's it, and thank you.
Thanks. Just to let you know, this, this is not a said and done thing tonight. We'll be guaranteed to be meeting again next month, so I, I just encourage you, or anyone in the audience, to try to work with the applicant here over the next month and, and begin to field some of this stuff out. Briefly, briefly.
Paul, can I ask you a question? The, the trucks in your, I call it Plan Three, I guess, or whatever, the alternative one that's not called, just to answer that, two questions. The truck is off the traveled way in your scenario, correct?
Correct, it's on, it's, it's completely on.
Right now, it, it, right now, it's sort of half in a little bit, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
How many, the Commonwealth people over there, I think it's about, how many hours a week is a truck at this store right now? I think it's about four, total.
Well, yeah, it's two days a week.
Seven days a week. How many hours it's open? It's there for four hours?
Yeah, at the most.
Of that whole entire time. I mean, that's not that long. If it's off the street, and the existing condition between Espresso and the old movie store stays the same, the, the truck that would, say, a pickup truck with a lawnmower trailer pulling out, would have more space, because there's not going to be any cars there, they're going to be able to turn left. In other words, the parking spaces now, those angled spaces, can you, can you, can they take a left when there's cars parked there? Or if there's like a large vehicle, it's, depends on the size of the vehicle? Yeah, well, that's, you know.
There are a lot of people that are parallel against the building in that loading zone now, so it might not even be considered a loading zone. It says no, but that's, but the angle parking doesn't approach the cut from the Fast Forward parking. It stops before that, so you should be able to make that turn.
Yeah. I mean, Paul, when you get that layout thing for the next meeting, I mean, if we could, I don't know how you do it, this is, this is an unusual situation, because this is like, kind of been there forever, like a restaurant. And Cisco, like he said at the beginning, try to figure out where you go, they're really, this is, this is no different than a restaurant, just finding a spot kind of thing and figuring it out. It's not really formal. Nothing's formal, and, and, but everybody uses the parking. So it's sort of like, been there forever, but I've never actually witnessed personally where I could actually tell how far across does a vehicle go beyond the layout to where the curbing would be proposed now? That's the key question to those lawnmower trailers, Paul. In other words, when they pull out.
Yeah.
Turning left, that curbing is going to be where compared to, to now, how they turn? And that's the key.
It's in front of the stripings.
So the stripe, so this, if you see right here, this is the, that's the striping, the curb is up on that side, or this side of the striping. So when coming out of, this is the Fast Forward.
Yeah, I see where it is.
Right there, that's the Fast Forward driveway right here, all right? So as you said, they come down Cherry, they come out of here, so that, that is going to be, that's where the stripe area is, right there. So there'd be no, no cars would be allowed to be parked along Williams at all.
Well, I know, but.
But the building's going to be closer to the road.
Correct.
So the building actually comes into the striping, where the striping is.
Yes.
So how much space between where the, those buildings are going to be and the space to the road is?
I get your question, I'm trying to ask the same question, and I don't know how to ask it.
Do you have enough ability with turning radius to pull this off?
Make that turn out the door, because right now, there's 10 feet of the striping. If you're pulling into the striping, that corner's going to be straight.
In other words, Paul, I think I got the answer.
Yeah, but if there's a car in the striping, I mean, it's...
When a car is, when a car is parked angled up against the old wood thing that you put there. Is the back of a car, if it's, say, a 19-foot pickup truck without an extended cab, whatever, is it, is the back of the vehicle in the road layout?
Oh, yes.
It has to be.
Yeah, yeah.
So my question, so, so if that's the case. Can a lawnmower trailer turn left when there's vehicles parked? It really can't.
I can barely get my opinion in around the vehicle.
That's, that's going to be an interesting scenario.
I think that's just something that, you know, between staff, Paul, and maybe the traffic engineer that will take a look at. I, I don't want to run into a lot of conjecture, but your point is well, your point is well taken, and I think that's something that needs to be explored between now and next month, when we're going to meet. On the same issue or something different?
Sort of the same.
Quickly, quickly.
To address what you said earlier, I think the truck they use has a lift gate, it doesn't have a ramp. It has a lift gate, which means it doesn't need the extended space in the back to get the stuff off, which is another 10 feet. And I don't know if it's possible, what we don't want to do, as we've just talked about, I see a lot of landscapers there, a lot of people that have trailers all day long, pulling it out of the dirt parking lot. By excluding them, because we don't have larger spaces for trailers, like you'll see sometimes off-island, by excluding them, I can understand your concern about driving those guys with those trailers over into your parking lot, where they tend to park straight across the side of your building, which means you cannot get in and out of the ones that are at the other building that used to be Yard Street Video. And I don't want to create another problem on a collateral parking area, because we're excluding the guys over here that are still going to go to this one and find a very creative way of doing it, or they're going to park in Williams Street and block it. But they're going to get very creative over there, they usually do.
Yeah.
So I, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, but I don't want to create other problems, since there is this symbiotic relationship between Fast Forward's parking lot and Cumberland Farms at the moment, you sort of want to remain, want to maintain that relationship instead of excluding them, because they will, path of least resistance, they'll just park straight across Fast Forward and block the whole parking lot.
Right.
So I'm just kind of concerned about maybe working this whole scenario out, maybe providing a couple of longer spaces for trailers, guys with trailers. I know that's kind of difficult, because the standard parking space is nine by 20.
Yeah.
And that's what you've got, you've got 17, you've got 16 nine-by-20s and one 14-foot for the van accessible space. It's getting a little crazy here and now, and I don't think we can solve it here, you've got another month before you come back. But I think you, there's a lot of moving parts to this whole dynamic.
Right, and this, that's why it's suggested with them as well, too, not necessarily a traffic engineer, but something to look at this over the course of those two years running, so that we're, we're just not running afoul on what's going on here.
I'm not so worried about the traffic engineer as far as how much traffic, because the traffic is, the traffic is the traffic, but, and I don't think there's going to be any more traffic coming than there is right now, and there, it's chaos over there. But I think it's the traffic engineer to make sure that the, the parking lot will work in a, from a practical sense.
Agreed. That's, and that's what I've been drilling into all along.
No, just so, I mean, you know, I mean, I can't, the site, to try to design a site for a landscaping tract, it just doesn't, it's not physically going to work. I mean, I can't design a parking lot unless you had, you're at a truck stop and you have an area designated for it, it's just very difficult. And then I don't know what your site, as far as, I don't know if you have a loading zone, or how they load and unload, who unloads and unloads your site, whether it's Cape Cod Express, or who, who does?
We have two, the other.
Like, like a mini, yeah, so it's a, you don't have a lot. Okay. So you have a standard box milk truck that comes in and out, comes down Cherry, then in?
Sales, uh, you know.
Okay, okay.
The same side as Cape Cod.
The smaller one, the smaller Cape Cod.
All right. Let me turn to the public for a few, unless, is this to what we were just talking about, John, or is this on a totally different base? Did you have a question? No, okay, sorry. All right. Mr. Donato, I believe you're up next.
Good evening, sir. Actually, Paul did meet with me, so I'm going to say, he has reached out to a neighbor, and I'm happy to say that, so.
Uh, Mark, can you just?
Well, Mark Donato, 106 Orange Street, I'm directly across the street, Williams Street.
Thank you, sir.
Run right into my driveway if you can carry it on going that direction. And I am somewhat pleased with the new scenario that he's come up with, in the, what we're calling, I guess, number three, or the newest one. I think that there's some possibilities that it could work. When you're saying now that they will be creative, I definitely agree with you there. I'm hoping that this is a raised curb, high enough, and sidewalk, pedestrian curb there, that they will not be driving up on it and park as they do in the downtown area, and thereby crushing the sidewalk. I'm wondering why, Paul, why you have not thought of just having the truck pull in and eliminating parking space number five? And the truck is, he pulls, he just slides off to the right, he pulls right, and eliminate parking space number five, he pulls up into there, and, and push the green space back another 10 feet, and you've got more than your 50 feet that you're trying to squeeze into the parking space that is close, unless it's just because you need to be immediately adjacent to the store. It seems this is a scenario that should be at least considered. The other thing that I want, I did, I was going to request a, an engineering, a town engineer to look at this, so hopefully, that, that will come out of this. And I am concerned with, yes, what might take place at the front of the store, obviously, because that's my side of the building. I was wondering if there were going to be tables there, and now I'm hearing about bike racks, I'm a little concerned there, but all in all, I think he's on somewhat of a right track, and I, from what I hear from the board, you people are all, your concerns are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Beth, good evening. Cliff Williams, 18 Williams Street. I've, I've heard about the consideration for speed bumps, so I hope there may be those slow-rolling speed bumps that you go over on the way up. Humps, yeah, okay. The ones you can go over from five corners going up to the mill.
The back you go, the flaring, yeah.
Yeah. Because as you've made a point, Linda, anytime during the day you can find cars going up or down either one of Cherry or Williams Street, I think they've clocked cars at like 55 miles an hour at some point, the police, so we need to slow them down. I think it's a great improvement. As most people know, that back area's been a big mud pit of gravel and mud and abandoned cars for years, so I think the direction we're having is great, and I think it's brilliant that trailers can't park there.
Yeah, there we go. Hi, I'm Patsy Wright. I live at 10 Cherry Street. And I just, I had a question about the lighting in the parking lot. You know, I think it was Linda who brought that up, yeah. And to me, it is of some concern that, you know, we don't have, you know, a Kmart parking lot in our neighborhood. I think that would, you know, be kind of disconcerting. And I think, Paul, you said it would be similar to it is on Sparks, and it wasn't a problem with the abutters on Sparks, and, but the abutters on Sparks are really different than the abutters at Cherry Street and Williams Street in our neighborhood, which, with the exception of Cumberland Farms, it's kind of a quiet residential neighborhood, you know, once you get a little bit away from it. So I, I am concerned that the lighting will be, you know, commercial industrial harsh, and I would like to see that addressed. And are, also, are we getting an engineering report out of this meeting or not? I keep making notes and then crossing them out. I mean, somebody, I'm just, because I'm not.
Just, just given the nature of what's before us at this point, it, it doesn't raise to the threshold of like a major commercial development. So what I'm asking to do, and I think staff is in agreement with it, is they'll work with the applicant over the next month. If they feel as though there are certain issues that, that may warrant additional engineering review in, in the town's favor, they're going to try to work with the applicant on it as well, too. So next, next month we'll begin to paint a slightly different picture of the extent of it.
Good. I think that would be, I think that's important, and it's, and it's a good thing. And just one more question, and I think it's for Paul, I guess. Will there be, the, the store is going to be twice the size, and so there's going to be obviously twice as much product. And twice as much product is going to have to be delivered. Will the, the current schedule of delivery on the trucks, will that increase? Will there need to be more deliveries? Will the truck need to make more trips because there's going to be more product?
To answer your question, no. I mean, they'll still, it's, they load the other store, Sparks, that same two times a week. I mean, so it would be, and I don't necessarily know if the increased size in the store necessarily means increased product or storage area within the store. I mean, but the intent would be still the two days a week. They're already doing what it's, what, what they're doing would just be maybe longer at the time to unload, as I said. It may be two hours at Sparks, where an hour and a half here may turn into an hour and 45 or two hours. I don't think there's any, there's no need to increase the, the deliveries. They'll basically do it within that same truck.
All right, good. I mean, that, that was a concern because, as we all know, when, when the trucks make the left-hand turn onto Williams Street, it wreaks havoc really with Cherry Street, Williams Street, everybody, because it just, it just creates congestion. So if there was going to be more delivery, then it would be more congestion, but since there isn't, that's, that's fine. But my main concern tonight is, is to take a look at the lighting for that parking lot. Thank you.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, feel free, take a ride at by Sparks Avenue at night, because I, I mean, I was very pleased, I think, with, especially with the gas, and typically gas stations become these beacons that we light up, and the low lighting over there, it's dark, it's dark sky compliant, it's zero trespass at all the property lines, it's a low, low light with its shielded very well, and I still, I think you get a good feeling at least. That was my main concern on Sparks Avenue, that it would be this beacon, you know, out there. You know, Stop and Shop was always dimly lit, but I think it was more so because all the lights were, just didn't work. I mean, so when we did, you know, when we did our site, I just wanted to make sure that it was, and I think it did turn out well.
Good. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead. I see, I got them, too.
My name is Marie Claire Rocha. I live at 7 Williams. And I just wanted to reiterate, my, my main concern is, is the traffic. And I think to suggest that this new store is not going to cause more traffic, zooming up Williams Street is, is really not a smart way to think. It's going to be a nicer store, it's going to have better parking, it's going to be newer, it's not going to be the eye store, it's not going to be filthy like the store that is there right now. So I think there are going to be more customers, meaning more traffic. You know, I'm right on 7 Williams Street. My kids walk to school. It is treacherous. There is no place to move over. Cars get backed up at the intersection of Williams and Pleasant, and I just don't see that, you know, I'm hoping that this traffic, you know, person who this traffic engineer comes in and really looks at that as well, because that needs to be addressed. Again, I don't know if it's sidewalks, I don't know if there's room for that, or speed bumps. I don't know if that just means that cars with trailers go over speed bumps and go flying. I don't know how much that really slows people down, but I think this is going to increase the traffic, and it is going to make, it, it, you know, it's just a little throughway. Williams Street has become a little throughway, and it really is a little residential street. Thanks.
Thanks. Sir, way up in the back.
My name's Jim McIntosh, and I didn't come to speak about this. But as a landscaper, I can tell you that I'm, I'm obviously here, I'm going to piss people off. I don't know why you're taking all these parking spots away from landscapers, so we can go there morning and get coffee, because there's not enough room with the other Cumberland Farms. We, we, we can't get in there now. But that's why you've, you've done this to accommodate them with these trees in the back and everything else, so there'll be no place for people to go in with pickup trucks and trailers to park, because we can't all go to the one over at Sparks Avenue, the other Cumberland Farms. So I'm, I know what you've done here, but you, whatever it is, you're accommodating neighbors, but you're certainly not accommodating landscapers who live here and have to make a living. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, please.
My name is Tom Austin, and Marf, Marf Jean and I live, live on Backstreet. Can you hear me? Okay. It's been touched upon, the, I mean, to some extent, I think the deplorable state of the current Cumberland Farms is, is a function of how old it is and how rundown it is. But I don't know who's going to operate this new facility, if, what the standard will be. Is it going to be run in a more professional manner? And is it going to be kept cleaner and not attract the kind of, I don't know, just sort of riffraff that you see in the, in the present one? They kind of treat it, because it looks so rundown, I think they, they tend to treat it badly, and it sort of generates that kind of, that kind of atmosphere. In addition, I think it's a bit, I agree it's a bit disingenuous to suggest that a bigger store that's twice the size is not going to generate more traffic. I think it obviously will, and I think that, that should be another concern that's been expressed. So that's all I have to say. Who's, I don't know who's going to operate this store, and if it's, if it's the same people that run the current store, or is it going to be the people that run the Sparks Avenue store? Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead. Now. Okay. That's fine. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? All right. Final comments from the board. I'll ask you to be brief, please.
I agree that the speed going up and down that road, and there's a lot of kids on that road, has gotten out of control, both going up and coming down. Because this is not a major commercial development, it's under 4,000 square feet, it's under the required 20 parking spaces, the planning board can't grab it as much as we would normally be able to grab it for contributions to a bike path, traffic mitigation, light, all the other stuff that goes with it. We have a fairly small level of jurisdiction on this at the moment. But I'd like to ask, through the chairman, I'd like to ask Andrew and Leslie, we seem to keep circling back to the traffic consultant with a lot of these issues. Through this process, is it possible for us to ask the applicant to go to traffic safety for the speed humps? I mean, simply posting 20 miles an hour is going to do absolutely nothing. People pay no attention to that stuff now, anyway. But is it possible to go to traffic safety through the applicant, through this process, to ask them about speed humps, at least on Williams Street? Cherry, I think, may be more difficult, but I think Williams being so darn narrow. And then I think you're on the roads in right of way, right?
Advisory.
Advisory, because they've needed a sidewalk there for a really long time. The problem is, a lot of the houses, because it was a five-foot setback, are fairly close to their front yard setbacks, and there's a change in grade between the east side and the west side, or the north side and the south side. Is this something that we can sort of keep pushing as a planning board, that, to take a look at the traffic on those roads, to take a look at maybe a sidewalk on those roads, take a look at speed humps on those roads, try to slow people down? Because by the time they hit Pleasant Street, they're going a good 40 miles an hour, and by the time they get down to Iron Street, they're slamming on the brakes. So I don't know what the solution is here, but I do agree that there is an issue with the speed, and we're adding to that probably in some way. So I didn't know what we, how far we could go, and this process being that it's not an MCD. But they did read the MIPOD, and that stuff that we, you and I had a hand in writing long 20 years ago.
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll try with that. You, as a board, have to remember that anything that you ask for, anything that's offered, is tied to a rational nexus about.
Correct.
It's not up to this applicant to fix every problem in the entire neighborhood. These are public roads, the town has a responsibility.
Correct.
As well. They can be, they can certainly add and contribute their share to it, but it's not reasonable to expect them to fix everything. The town can program sidewalks in their capital budget. There's all kinds of ways to fund public infrastructure that needs to be done. If it needs to be done, it needs to be brought forward and put through a process. So, yes, we can require this applicant to make improvements to what they're adding to the neighborhood, but we can't go crazy here and start asking them to fix everything unless they're in the spirit of generosity to do that. So you need to temper what you're asking to tie directly to what either is a new impact, what, what's being, you also have to take into effect what's being fixed by them now. So, I don't know if you're, they're here, if you're asking them for, you know, I think some limited traffic, but it just doesn't require a full-on traffic study.
Correct.
For an MCD. It just does not reach that, that level.
Right.
I mean, we can certainly look at what the different-sized store would generate from a standard traffic modeling, to see what that difference might be. We can look at the turning ratios. Again, we can still look at options for the, for the loading, but, you know, I don't know if, if they have any additional thoughts on what they're willing to.
Right.
Fund. But we don't, there's not, there's not, there's not funding for it, and there's not a mechanism.
Right. And I think that's why you had said almost maybe 25, 45 minutes ago, why you wanted that additional month's worth of time to try to work with the applicant and then make some decisions about where we really did need to spend focus on, and, and other things, like you said. All right, just say within the purview of this particular project, because it is the town's responsibility to have to deal with certain things above and beyond the entire streetscape. Quickly.
Hey, Paul, I have a question. This loading zone in the, the other scenario, that's going to be, yeah, the third scenario, that's not going to have, what's going to be going on in that area when there's no, for those other, other than those four hours a week? Nothing, right?
Well, what I'd like to do is, well, you know, we talked about having a loading zone designated.
Sure.
I'd like to have the loading zone designated, but have two spaces that they could, other than the two hours of loading, have two parking spaces.
That's the landscape trailer spaces, in my opinion.
Oh, that's true, true, true.
Because you can pull right in.
Yeah, you could back right in.
And maybe have some signage that says, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know. 11:45 Tuesdays and Fridays.
Yeah.
Get out of here. Sorry. Four hours a week. Big deal.
And typically, when they do deliver, that's, that truck is usually hitting this door.
It's about a quarter.
Like 2 o'clock.
Well, because it goes the other one first.
So, and that's, I mean, those guys are all working typically. It's going to be that early morning. That's a good point. It could be a, it's an oversized space, it's basically.
Because what Jim brought up, Jim McIntosh, that is true, and I just kind of like went back in my brain for a minute to think about where we've taken away, all the pullovers, the green, when the green was the West Creek thing, or Bagel thing, or whatever. You were, people were pulling over, remember we were going to make it one-way and all that, and we tried it for about an hour and switched it back? That was the pullover. And the Rotary Restaurant was a pullover for 25 years. And all hell broke loose, and we put the same existing business there, and all of a sudden, we had to block all the parking. And we planted trees on Milestone Road on the right-hand side where all the, all the 10-wheels used to pull over and walk across the street to get to the Rotary. That is what we did for years after Thumann went phased out, nobody thumbs anymore. So I think, you know, and I, the reason I bring these things up is because when people start finding problems with an existing business, it's already there, okay? The cars don't come from Hyannis to go to Cumberland Farms.
Right.
The truck does, but the cars don't. They're already here. Imagine if this store, right here, that we're talking about right now, was built and fixed before the other one was built? Are you kidding? Now you've got a traffic problem, because now the people like it, okay? Nobody ever heard of a, of David Hasselhoff's commercial until that store was put in with the taller coffee. So that store just became popular because it is nicer, and it's in a, it's near the schools, and all the people walk through Allen's Lane, okay? I'm not trying to say I can have a crystal ball. I don't think there's going to be more business here. I think there's going to be the same business. Yeah, there may be some more, but it's not going to be like the other store and gravitate all these people that are walking, not going to walk from Allen's Lane down to the store. It's a different section of town. But the problems that have been brought up are all good, and the landscape trailer, as dumb as it sounds, is actually something worth trying to fix in those, in that 50-foot spot.
Yeah, I could actually, I mean, I'm just looking at it now. I could have two, you could have two designated.
You're not going to have more of them.
You could have two designated landscapes.
They're only running in there.
Two trailers. You could have it designated for two trailers, you know? Yeah, you could, it could work.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Quickly, quickly.
Andrew. MCDs we can reopen anytime if there appears to be a problem. Can we reopen this permit if there appears to be a problem?
Yes.
Okay. Because the only ones that I've ever talked about reopening have been MCDs and not regular special permits.
With, with proper notice, you can reopen any special permit.
Correct.
For compliance with conditions.
All right. So if there's a, there turns to be a cluster over there of some sort, when this starts, if this happens here, then we can reopen it and address the problem that has been created. I also wanted the public to know, when's your con-con meeting? A week from this Wednesday? Yes. There is a con-con meeting on the same subject, and tomorrow night, everybody, the HDC is taking this up again as far as the architectural, hardscaping, sidewalks, things like that.[1768.97]
Which one is that?
The HDC is at 5 o'clock upstairs. The con-con is at 4 o'clock in here, upstairs, next Wednesday, not tomorrow, not two days from now. So the HDC's hearing is still open at 5 o'clock tomorrow night, up there.
If we're going to do that for every applicant of Councilwoman, now, that's fine. Now, I'm just saying, let's, let's be a little, let's, let's be a little...
A lot of collateral issues going on.
Right. Let's be a little careful where that's tracking, okay? Thank you. I, go ahead.
Before we, before we wrap up...
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that we will take, you know, the intervening month between now and the next meeting to meet with staff, discuss whatever consultants or experts we want to get involved. We can talk to our client and figure out what amenities, in addition to what we've already offered, we're willing to talk about, and we're certainly, as always, willing to meet with any of others or neighbors who have our concerns. I just want to reiterate what I said at the beginning. If we were calling this Paul's Market, and Paul and Val were running it, this would be done as a matter of right, and we'd have minor site plan review. So I guess when you're looking at this, I'd ask you to think, how is the fact that this is a formula business impacting the use, the intensity, as opposed to just Paul and Val's market? Because that's why we're here. It's because it's a formula business and for no other reason.
Do you want to explain the formula business to people?
Ken, Ken, I'll tell you what, I, I think...
I think, I think we can all educate ourselves.
I, I think that's something I would ask you to do, and I think if anyone has that question, that would be, that's something they can either approach our board about or through you as well, too.
Great.
I don't think we need to belabor the point here.
I don't either.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, I appreciate it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so, board members, I think we're going to be continuing this till our next meeting on 10/13. I, oh, I'm sorry, when is it?
10/16.
Oh, then, we need to update all these little continuances, 10/16?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin, I made the motion to continue to 10/16.
10/16.
Yeah, and you're seconding that now. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have it unanimously. Thank you, thank you, everyone, for showing up. We really do appreciate it, and we appreciate your comments. All right. Next thing before us is going to be 1714 Norman Levinson on 32 Nanantum Avenue for the applicant. Huh. Okay. No one for the applicant?
No.
No?
Surprised.
I'm a little surprised as well, too. Yeah. So, Andrew, Leslie, did anyone say they were going to show for this, or...
Mr. Chairman, no. We received the application. Staff reviewed it. Pequot Street is very well maintained.
Yep.
There don't seem to be any traffic or safety issues. No, his...
I don't see Mr. Bracken rising to the occasion. This isn't your project, sir, is it?
What is it?
On Norman Levinson, 32 Nanantum?
We're in another project, but now we're presenting them for this.
Okay, that's...
I have some specific questions that I need to answer.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Leslie, I'm so sorry.
Okay, so staff reviewed the application. There doesn't seem to be any traffic or safety issues presented, no historic or scenic integrity issues either. So we recommend approval of the special permit as requested.
Board members, any questions or discussion at this stage? No.
I want to look in that driveway on Nanantum. It's perfect. You, they never back out into the street. They get all the turnaround. And it's like, picture the way we like it, so, it's great.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this application?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, this is just, this is a, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this is a special...
This is a special permit, okay. Yeah, sorry. Mr. Marklinger, can we, can we...
Okay, I'm ready.
Good man. So the motion was made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's not made in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Okay. 7715, is it Machoni? I'm sorry. Lane Realty Trust modification, 21 Tacoma Way, and I'm sure Mr. Bracken will bring me up to speed on the correct pronunciation. Sir.
Don Bracken, Bracken Engineering. I think it's Machine Lane.
Thank you.
Again, this is a continued hearing from the last meeting. I'll just quickly summarize what we're asking for. Modification to the original subdivision approval. Number one, road design change from gravel to paved. At the last meeting, the planning board asked us to consider that, which the client is willing to do, the current owner is willing to do. Number two is discussed at the last meeting. We're locating the drainage swale on the opposite side of the road that was originally approved, which was on the side of the road, where the lots were, which required open drainage stone trenches along with culverts of driveways. We felt this is a much better design, can be landscaped better and concealed much better. We talked about the sewer. We added a sewer line design to the plan. The owners are in the process of applying our warrant article to get this included in the sewer district. This is in a Zone 2 public water recharge area, so the lots do have limitations on the number of bedrooms because of that. Obviously, with the sewer, they won't have those Title V restrictions. We adjusted locations of the water main and some of the underground utilities. We ran it by the water department. The original water main was eight inches. They said we'd go six inches. These changes would allow us also to remove the drainage easement that runs parallel with the road. Originally, it was 20 feet wide to accommodate that drainage system I mentioned. We really only need about 10 feet wide to accommodate the road grading and some of the stub connections. Also, in that same line, we can remove the drainage easement between lots three and four and the, and the easement on lot four, which is another large, open-sized drainage basin, which we didn't feel is necessary for this particular project. And lastly, we're asking to modify the approval from 2012 to remove the requirement in agreement number eight, that each lot shall be limited to one dwelling unit. I believe at that time, when we weren't the engineers at that time, that was in progress for getting the gravel road approved. Also, with the Title V restrictions, you could only get three houses on three of the lots, or four houses on one of the lots. So now, if town sewer does go in, then that, that won't be a factor. And again, 20,000 square foot lots at 12 and a half percent. Ground cover yield is a 2,500 square foot footprint, so even if there are going to be secondary dwellings on some of these lots, it's going to be limited by the ground cover.
Okay. Board members, any discussion? Andrew, Leslie, anything you have for us?
Mr. Chairman, we did get a final review from Ed Pesci, which was favorable.
Yes.
We recommend approval of the proposed modifications.
Okay. Hearing nothing from the board. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Discussion. And we don't need to activate anyone else, let's do it.
It's an AI, so, regular members.
Thanks, sorry. Motion was made in second to close the public hearing. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve with the, those amendments paved and the swale drainage plan and all that stuff.
I think, well, you know, maybe there should be a condition. We have to file either an A and O plan or modify subdivision plan to change those easements, however you want us to do it, you know, Mylar Plan requires.
Your call.
Can we just work that out in the decision?
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
Number five, number six.
Yeah. So that motion's not made in. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Excuse me. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute controlled recess, so if you'll excuse us.
Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
When you were talking about the ANR, he just mentioned this one, Tacoma Road, as an ANR.
No, just to take, just to get rid of easements.
And then like surrounded, right.
Just to get rid of the easements at all. He wasn't talking about the...
About the plan itself, no, not about the underlying plan, just to eliminate the easements that he was changing around.
So technically, an ANR is a lot that is on a public road, that the lot itself existed before 1955.
No. It's on a public road that the town or the planning board thinks is adequate, and that you have to have the zoning frontage. That's one way. If there's two buildings on the lot from 1955, you can chop it up any way you want. If you want to convey land to a butter, you can do that.
This is all under ANR?
All under ANR. Or a perimeter plan, which is, that's what he'll be doing. It's just existing plans, existing lines, you just want to give something on record.
On the thing.
Yeah.
Because they're just, eh, just, hey. Let me just see what's next. On these ANRs, not these particular ones, but some of them seem to give away, we don't seem to have any control of what they put there.
Because it's called approval, not required.
Right.
The planning board approval isn't required.
Because of all these other reasons.
Correct. The only thing you can do is if you think those reasons don't apply, you can vote it as subdivision, and then they have to come back in for approval required. But for the most part...
We never do that.
No, because no, no surveyors put anything in that's going to require that.
Right.
Because they know the rules.
It just takes any...
It takes us out of the, it takes the planning board out of the mix, yeah.
Right.
And some of it's...
I thought this was, because it was...
Not as good as it might seem.
I'm starting off, when I went back through the second time.
He's doing it.
Well, I want to run up and grab some water before we... No, 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 I'm just going to say, we've got a few minor issues to iron now. Sign them. Vote to sign them. We'll have them on the news.
Barry.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be all right if I went home now?
You're more than welcome. We've got one more public hearing, but if, you're more than welcome to leave now, ma'am, if you'd like.
Yeah.
I think your chauffeur is here. This is the Valero property.
The chauffeur is here, and she hasn't been dinner yet.
Oh, my. That's important, so...
She's prepared dinner, and then sent to my husband. It's all ready, and see you later, bye.
Here, we'll get...
But you can stay if you want.
No, I don't, I go home and get dinner, and I've got to fight with that internet.
I just want to just have your hand or...
Hi, hi.
I'm late the way it's going.
No, I'm taking that home.
This is throwing away?
That's throwing away. That's in your hand, it goes in here.
Oh, what did you do, Don? It was okay a minute ago.
It must be spitting the world, must be spitting fast.
Are we in the Taurus?
Let's get the arm over here.
No, Dr. Who.
Dr. Who? The Twilight Zone?
It is, it is.
That's interesting. That's really, honey, I've never seen that.
Tom, go home this midnight.
Oh, jeez.
These evenings go by so fast, I scare.
Yeah, Markley and Marcy is definitely messing with me more than I care. I'm glad, I'm glad you're seeing that. I'm glad you're not really wanting to see that. I was going to be like, oh, my God.
This goes in...
Well, we'll be right back at 6:30, so we can start all over.
What happened? Did it start doing that? Oh, you're tall enough to ask for it. It is.
I already accused him of that.
Linda, we're...
I denied it.
We're doing it at 5, right? Not 4?
Well, why is it going on?
My internet's...
Yeah, I mean, this is generally what we've been...
I don't know what's wrong. I'm going to go home and try and get through the Verizon, see what I can do. Do you have a Verizon internet? Yes.
We've got one over here.
I'm going to find out, because I know he can, thank you.
You're going out?
Ah, there we go.
I thought she was going to follow Marklinger right into the Mansburg.
Look at that, all right. Just missing Mr. Marklinger.
I can go look.
Thanks. I'll just, I'll just wait. She's got it.
She's like, oh, good.
She's getting indisposed.
Oh, I got you, yeah, okay. Okay, let her make that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, you're on the right track.
Okay, now 6:00.
It comes up on the hard drive. You just got the screen.
Oh, what?
And you watch, the clock is resetting itself.
Just go, we can't put down. He was at that. He was at that.
You can certainly turn that on.
Well...
The other video camera's running. Leslie, do you need a moment?
I use this so rarely, I'm having trouble remembering how to do it.
Now, you were on the right video.
Are we back? Yeah, we're back on here.
Try, give her two.
Back on the case, Don.
Come on the next one over here.
Is there a 10-year-old kid about?
This is what I do day in and day out as well.
My 14-year-old niece.
People come to my turn online, usually it's just like, the screensaver comes by and telling them what to do.
This says town...
Yeah, yeah, it gets so old.
And it just comes right up.
Ah, I gotta go.
Go on.
Yeah, well, that's been a while, though.
Oh, you know, well, your video cable is amazing.
There we go. That would help. I got someone there, so, two extra minutes on here. Good. You've got something to do. That's all good on me, you know?
There you go.
About 20 years ago, yeah. For me, probably 30 years ago. This could be long, it's a long thing. I don't know, maybe it won't be.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us to do that. We're duly reconvened at this point. Next application for us is 7716 Valero Road subdivision on Old South Road for the applicant. Mr. Armanet, good evening.
You can certainly turn that on. The other video camera's running. Leslie, do you need a moment?
I use this so rarely. I'm having trouble remembering how to do it.
Now, you were on the right video.
Are we back?
Try, try give or two. Come on, the next one over here.
Is there a 10-year-old kid about?
This is what I do day in and day out as well.
My 14-year-old niece.
Usually it's just like, the screensaver comes by and telling them what to do.
This says, tell them...
Yeah, 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 it gets so...
And it just comes right up.
Ah, I gotta go.
Go on.
Oh, you know, well, your video cable is amazing.
There we go.
I got, I got someone there, so, yeah, two extra minutes on her. Good. You guys have something to do. That's all, that's all good on me, you know?
There you go.
About 20 years ago, yeah. For me, probably 30 years ago. This could be long as well. I don't know, maybe it won't be.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us to do that. We're duly reconvened at this point. Next application for is a 7716 Valero Road subdivision on Old South Road for the applicant. Ms. Armanetti, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board staff. Dave Armanetti, Richmond Company. Here this evening in our capacity as the applicant on behalf of Old South Realty Trust and the Valero Realty Trust, the two Valero family entities that own the fee interest in the 12 and 1/2 acre Valero property on the north side of Old South Road. As noted in the staff report this evening, we are here presumably briefly for just a procedural formality. This application was submitted in early July in advance of a deadline that was coming up strictly in order to preserve the property owner's rights under a zoning freeze application from the preliminary subdivision that we submitted December of 2013. There's a deadline that would have passed after the first week of July, so we did submit this application acknowledging the fact that it was unlikely that we were going to need to process it other than procedurally to open the hearing, presumably continue it to a date certain. So that's what we're here for this evening unless the board has other questions or decides to take some other action. The only thing I would say at the board's discretion, obviously, our request, given the timeframes that seem to be at work here, would be we don't foresee any need to continue this to a date certain any earlier than December at the earliest, probably January of 2015 in my mind is maybe more appropriate. Our intent, and the property owner's intent, is not to pursue the existing zoning development but to continue the master planning and community outreach process that we started, gained some traction on at April Town Meeting, or continuing and help to continue through the end of this year. So this is strictly a procedural request. Again, unless the board has some other direction they'd like us to go in. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. The joy of computers. Anyways, board members, do you have any questions or comments at this juncture?
I think there is one little housekeeping matter that the staff has to take care of before you take the action to continue.
And thank you, yes. I actually will bring that up at this point. Thank you for reminding me. One thing that did happen is when we were dealing with, it was the preliminary plan that was before us, Andrew. The board had talked about sending out a letter of approval with the conditions that were in there. We all conveniently nodded our head up and down, and that, that's what began to happen, but unfortunately, the letter never got appropriately signed. So I'm going to ask you to please ratify as a board, ratify that decision tonight to make sure that that is addressed appropriately. So, board members, I need someone to make that motion. Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, there's a draft letter in your packet which covered the, covered the concerns.
Yep. So, not at this juncture, no. You're, what I, pardon? We're not ready to jump into that yet. The first thing I need to do procedurally, the first thing I need you to do procedurally is to help address this letter and ratify what, what needs to happen with it. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's now made in second. A discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Now that allows us to proceed, and thank you for reminding me about that, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Board members, did you have anything? Staff, anything? Go ahead, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, if the board is willing to entertain the idea of continuing this to a date certain until some other things are ironed out, we first of all need an extension form executed by the applicant. And Mr. Armanetti and I talked about the applicant volunteering to pay for a renotice for the paper and for the abutting property owners when that date comes up because of the significant time lapse.
Both of those items will confirm for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there anything else? Do, can I ask you a question? Do we need to reiterate any of the other discussions that we had to have at this current juncture in time, or is it better for us to now wait until they begin to move forward into December? I just don't want to miss any opportunities about anything with the current plan that's before us and that now jumping to a new iteration. So we're good waiting till then?
We are, Mr. Chairman. When we discuss a definitive plan, there's obviously a lot of detail that we have to get into. We need answers about questions of, you know, residential versus commercial, so there would be a lot to consider at that time, and maybe if those things are answered in the interim, then we won't have to hopefully spend a lot of time on them.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, hearing none at all. This is a public hearing as well. To Janet, good evening. Could identify yourself for the record, please.
Janet Schulte for Curlew Court. I just want to thank the folks from Richmond Development Corporation for suggesting that we continue this. The attorney from the Noshop Homeowners Association sent you a letter that asking that we continue this area because of the short notice, and I would also encourage the Richmond Development Corporation to continue to talk with their neighbors or to begin to talk with their neighbors in Noshop about their plans for the property on these proposed subdivisions on Old South Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Where do you want us to go with it? December? January?
I think...
My sense tells me December's probably a little too soon for all the parts to move forward enough to where you'll have something of substance to discuss, and I'm not concerned that January would be too long, but we're certainly willing to do whatever the board wishes.
That would be January 12th. I got January 12th, but I know the 19th is the holiday. It's the 12th. It'll be January 12th. I'll make a motion to continue to January 12th with a requisite extension form in the office.
Yes, we'll get that completed tomorrow.
Great. The motion's now made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing that you have before you is 12 A and Rs at this point. Is there a wish to isolate anything out from this thing? Go ahead, you're probably going to...
Yeah, you know which one.
7726, okay.
77, um, yeah, 7726, and I can't vote on 7730.
All right. We'll isolate that out just to make it a little bit easier. Was there anything else the board wishes to look at at this point?
7725, I'd like to ask a question about...
Okay, we'll isolate that out, too. Okay.
I'll make a motion to endorse 7727, which is McRobey, 9 South Road. 7728, North Atlantic Development, 130 Old South Road. 7729, Michael Holgate, 248 Vesper Lane.
Good.
7731, US Bank, 84 Baxter Road. 7732, Juliet Hunter, 97 Sanctity Road. 7734, Gail Murray, 62 Lover's Lane. 7735, Richmond Company, 68101214, Reglin Avenue. 7737, Union Street Trust, the Berlins at 50 Union Street. 7738, the inhabitants of Town of Nantucket, Low Beach Road. And for endorsement.
Great. Motion's now made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. So let's go back. 7725, 55 Hulbert Ave LLC.
Andrew can answer that question.
Go ahead. Duke.
Uh, are we getting access out of this, the town?
Uh, what?
Is the town going to get any access out of there?
Yes.
That little dashy line there?
It's calling for, this, this shows, this is James Street, which is between Hulbert and Nantucket Harbor. It was the subject of a 2013 special town meeting. This identifies parcel 1 and 2, which would be taken by the town. The requirement of the town meeting is that we do have access, and that's at this point the five-foot access that's outlined, and a one-big-beach easement covering between the bulkhead and the harbor. There's some discussion by the board about possibly widening that easement, which will be subject to negotiations. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. This is, yeah, this is...
That's a kind of a, kind of a been-there-forever shell driveway. So we assume that that's the reason that it's complicated, because it's already pretty wide. How would it be delineated or just on paper?
The, yeah, the, the issue that had come up through the selectmen is that because it is wide, that maybe, you know, you, it's not going to be possible to hold it to a five-foot, per se, over the driveway. So that might be changed a little bit in the final. This also requires the modification of the fence, so that, that has to be modified. And then it goes over a bulkhead and some other things, so, and, and as you can see, part of the house is located in the way, so...
Yeah. Anybody tell Marcus about that?
Yeah. It's been there since, for a long time, I guess, so, um, but all of this, this is step one. You will likely see a different plan at some point when this moves towards disposition. But I will tell you, you know, the property owners have funded this plan. They have been totally cooperative. So this has been a cooperative effort to date. Yeah.
Anything else, board members? Pleasure, the board. Okay, and do I hear a second?
Yeah, second.
Made in second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. All right, 7726, Tiffany Vittarini and Joseph Vittarini, 8...
Why don't we endorse, I'll make a motion, we'll go 7727.
Huh?
Everybody's going to...
I just have to recuse.
Excuse, you know, get that out of the way, and we'll get to this.
All right, so, all right, so you're going to make a motion to endorse 7730, let the record reflect that. Ms. Williams is going to recuse herself from this. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's now made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that's a three-to-all vote by this board. Thanks, now.
Sorry. I knew that you might forget.
No, I wasn't going to forget it, but that's okay. I'm glad you, that's fine. We...
We cleaned it up.
That's fine. That works for me. Okay, so back to 7726. Vittarini property on 8th and Mass Road. Board members or our staff, do you want to...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could just remind board members that on August 31st, 2011, we did receive a memo from Jonathan Silverstein from Town Council advising on this particular issue. This is a 1985 subdivision, and it had some conditions that were discussed by the board, but some problems in at least the practice and the implementation. There was a deed restriction from 1985 which prohibited subdividing of the properties. That was dated December 30th, 1985. That expired, or is set to expire, in December of 15. The, the restriction, basically, we've, we, when we did the rezoning of this area, if you remember, it was originally in the R C 2 zoning, so virtually every lot could have been subdivided. By changing it to R 10, it reduced that to basically four lots.
Basically four lots. That weren't R 10?
Correct. So, um, in Town Council's analysis, the planning board required a separate legal document be created to enforce the subdivision restriction. That was never done, and basically the covenant, all of the lots have been released from the covenant. They're owned by individual property owners. They advised of different ways to enforce that, and basically, as you know from reading your recent victory on Brooks Court, that A and Rs, there's three key roadways that are part of your consideration. Either it's a public road, which this is not, a road that existed prior to 1955, et cetera, with, which this is not, or a road that you've already approved through a prior subdivision, which it is. So, the law on A and R is also clear that you shall, if you make a determination that it's one of those types of roads, you shall endorse it, that your approval is not required. Okay? So I, we, staff, we believe that it meets that requirement, and that really, that you really do need to sign the plan. Whether or not, you're signing the plan doesn't mean it meets zoning, doesn't mean that it's free of challenge under the deed restrictions. There's a method of 10 taxpayers that can bring a suit about this. Unfortunately, this subdivision doesn't have an organized homeowners association that we have put in place after 1991. They do have a very active group of property owners that meet and discuss things, but they don't have enforcement powers. There is a similar case where, that we've looked at from Harwich, where, again, the board was required to make, to sign the A and R because it was in advance of filing for a variance in that particular case. So just by signing it doesn't mean that it's buildable, that there isn't an additional process that applies. But again, I don't really see, because it abuts on a road that you had prior approval of, and that there are, you know, I think you should think about the public consideration of, you know, four potential lots in an 80-lot subdivision, whether that's a public concern or a private concern at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Andrew, when we came in before, when this sort of came up, they were all arguing about Appleton Road, those lots that are also part of this, but they're half the size of these guys.
Right.
And they don't access through the main road. Wasn't there some discussion about the fact that they should all get together and re-up the deed restrictions? That was not done?
There, there was a discussion about that, and yeah, that, that was not done.
Well, I hate to say it, but you snooze, you lose. We were very clear with them at the time that they had to get together, they had to get, what, 80% of them, whatever it is, to re-up, to reinstitute those deed restrictions before they expired. So this is, we're doing this now, but he, under their deed restriction, which doesn't expire for another year, he's still going to sit on it.
Right.
So this is sort of an A and R that's just going to sit there until whatever they do between now and next December.
Right. There's an additional process at Land Court. They would have to get Land Court approval. There's, there's other, other steps here.
Those neighbors are going to get notified when that happens.
Correct.
Okay, so if we don't have any choice because of the scenario that you presented to us, then I'll make a motion to endorse it.
All right. And do I hear a second to that?
Second for more discussion.
Yes, sir.
If we could.
So, yeah, motion's...
Andy, can you just, can you just go through the 3M subdivision issue when we changed to R 10?
The Nickman...
Very similar, except for that one area. We did, we went to R 10 because that was the most, you know, most conforming zoning district, just similar to this situation.
But you had Nickman's lot and the other two on the corners.
You always have those lots. And then the De Aron one, I know that wasn't the same thing. The De Aron had no secondary dwelling, was in their original 1979 approval, I believe it was '79. And that expired a few years ago when Mitch McCaw built his second dwelling. But under what mechanism did we, I mean, we allowed those, the 3M, to sort of, to A and Rs happen out there? I mean, can you just...
Yeah.
It's like a Nantucket case law type of thing.
Well, the, the practice at this time was not very solid. I can tell you that a lot of the, a lot of what is clear that restrictions put in a planning board covenant are not subject to the 30-year window.
They're, they're hard, they can be, they...
They're, they're enforced by the board. This was not granted in that particular way.
The misinformed.
Right. And, and, and Town Council distinguishes between two things. Number one, the restriction for the single-family dwelling per lot was included, but the restriction against subdivision was not included as part of the approval, and there's a discussion about that. So, like I said, the, there is also a discussion here about, you know, who bears the cost for enforcing and other things where it wasn't properly done. So, all of those, I think, factor, factor in here that this is a step, but it's not the final one. I don't believe it's the final one. And again, you know, meeting zoning compliance and everything else has a way to go.
And if this was left in AC 2, what would we be facing?
Well, each of the lots, each of the lots would be re-divided three, you know, two to four times each, and that was the reason it was...
So in my opinion, by going to R 10, I mean, my lesser professional way of explaining it, that the neighborhood knew that there were four 20,000-square-foot lots in the entire subdivision. They knew there was these several, is it four? Because we had this discussion in 11. I remember this.
As part of this Warren article, we did an analysis, and that's, that's where it came from.
They all know, but they were here.
There's some others that, there's some other lots that have enough area but not enough frontage. They might be on a, on the turning circle, so they don't have additional frontage. And again, there's lots that might have enough frontage but not enough area, so...
Only those corner lots seem to be, there's like four corner lots in there that seem to be... to be...
That have enough on both streets.
On both streets.
Okay.
So I made a motion to endorse that.
All right, so the motion was made in second.
Second.
There was discussion, is there anything else before us then? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you're in the affirmative, sir, for endorsement? Yeah. It's four to oh, thank you. Okay, there are four second dwellings before you at this point, is there a wish to isolate anything out?
Mr. Chairman, I have a correction on one of them, um...
And I've got one that maybe your correction and mine is...
The Monomoy Creeks one?
No, this was on two thirty-five Mad... For the secondary dwellings?
Uh, not that one, I, I, I have a correction on the, um, condition four of the Monomoy Creeks.
Yeah.
I think, apparently this, I had asked that this be written in a way that, um, acknowledged the, um...
Good night.
The fact that there are wetlands and...
Sorry, Ms. McGowan, just asked to leave the stage.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Um, there are wetlands, and this is, um, this is an access point that is quite sensitive.
Yeah.
So, condition four, which talked about, um, that this, the vegetation would be cut to sixteen feet, is really too wide in application here.
Okay.
Um, that, that basically, we should, um, trim within the existing, um, traveled way.
Yeah.
Um, and especially not to stray into areas where the wetlands are located.
Okay.
It's condition number four.
What do you want to change it to?
Um...
Sixteen is gonna be...
Yeah, I would, um, strike out the sixteen feet in width.
And what, do more of it?
And I would also...
Make it what instead of sixteen, twelve?
Um...
Or is it variable?
It's a variable width at the moment, so I would, you know, I would, I would not have a, I would not hold it to a minimum.
Okay.
Does it have no problem with that?
So let's, let's wrap up this thing first, so we're clear. Are we good on the changes to four and five so far?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, Andrew, you satisfied with that?
So, yeah, I think we're just gonna strike condition four.
Okay, so strike condition four and condition five, are you gonna change that to variable width or something of that ilk?
Um...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that the traveled surface is basically fine the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
We really don't need to do anything there.
So just leave, remove condition five on?
Uh, five is that the, um, that the asphalt comes in, and that's okay.
So just four?
I'm sorry.
Four, do you maintain existing condition?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I'm so sorry, yeah.
That's fine.
Never mind, sorry. Okay.
And actually, we could, you know, um, fill potholes and, you know, anything in the existing condition, so...
Okay.
Number one has to come out?
Yeah.
If it's dirt roads, the UCC will not allow aprons at any time on dirt roads.
And we have to watch that.
So you can't keep putting aprons in on dirt roads. As a condition.
Right.
I think all the rest of them are on paved roads, nope?
All right, let's not skip around, let's just focus on this one particular one, okay?
So I think number one has to come out, considering.
I see staff agreeing with that.
What, what number you, one, one, three, one?
Yeah.
Right, so if condition one is struck, condition two is renumbered to one.
Mm-hmm.
Condition three is renumbered to two.
Yeah.
Um, condition four is that, that the existing access is maintained in good condition.
Okay.
And condition five is about the asphalt.
Okay.
Well, which is now four.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay, we all clear on that?
Yeah.
All right.
Any other problem or no?
All right, but let's conclude this one, yeah, we're gonna have to, okay?
I make a motion to approve two fifty, two thirty-five Madecat Road, eighteen Blackfish Lane, and Monomoy Creek, really trust with those amendments to it?
Nope, because I need to talk to you about two thirty-five Madecat.
So I just make a motion to approve eighteen Blackfish LLC.
Yeah.
So therefore, that's by law.
Okay, so, all those in favor, and do I hear a second to eight? Thank you, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, you now know what's happening with Monomoy Creek, realty trust?
I make a motion to approve Monomoy Creek realty trust with those amendments to the legislation.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, three to oh.
And if we go to the same thing to Seventy Hoots Farm Road, that's on the dirt road part of it?
Yep, and you wanna...
Then number one needs to come out of there also.
Got it, there it gets subsequently renumbered.
So I'll make a motion to approve Seventy Hoots Farm Road without number one, and all the rest being renumbered.
Okay, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, just, okay, so we're back to two thirty-five Madecat Road, and this is so simple. Can we get a modified site plan from them about what they're doing, because you have no clue where the driveway's coming in, or what the driveway's supposed to configure, or, at least from what I could see on that plan, unless you guys have got something different, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, he emailed the plan to me, and it's actually a very nice plan, I don't know what happened with the copy, but...
Okay, yeah, I will tell you, didn't make it into my packet, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I don't know why.
Did it show up in other people's packets? Then, I'm so sorry.
No, it's, it's very, it's something with the printing or the copying, I'm not sure.
Okay, but you...
We have a good plan in the file.
That's all I care about then.
It isn't happy. Yes.
Good.
And off a paved road.
Yes.
So, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve with a proper plan and...
Two thirty-five?
Two thirty-five Madecat Road.
Thank you, motion's now made in second, and discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Okay, previous plans, first thing before us is seven, zero, eight, four, WB Holding Subdivision, they are looking for the release of a lot on a Form J. You have the recommendation from staff, is there any discussion by the board?
Okay, I was...
Oh, is it Ken's?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, um, the release of lot two sixteen for Seventy Hoots Farm Road.
Okay, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have unanimously. Seven, three, four, two, Weatherly Place, this is another Form J with legal documents and plans that will need to be endorsed. Staff recommends endorsement for the above?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion's now made in second, and for discussion, hearing none, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Seven, six, four, zero, Fisher Lane subdivision, um, final plans have been reviewed at this point, um, issues are addressed, staff recommends endorsing the plans.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Seven, six, six, one, Woodland Hill subdivision, eleven Mill Hill, this is for a Form J of one lot release, staff recommends endorsement?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Fourteen, fourteen, Nantucket Golf Club Incorporated, two fifty Milestone Road, uh, plans have been reviewed by Adashi, staff recommends endorsement of said plans.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. That brings us to a preliminary plan, seven, seven, two, four, S P Norwell LLC, Union Street.
Is it number forty-one, eighty-one, or is it something?
Pardon?
It's a forty-one, eighty-one, or...
Which one?
It's the last one, it's permanent, or...
And no, it's a subdivision.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just back to...
We're back to...
Right, they were asked to come back.
Yeah.
And here they are. Gentlemen, good evening, for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Bodett, for the record, I'm here with Jamie Anderson, once again. Uh, what you have before you here is a revised preliminary plan, uh, that takes into account a lot of the board's concerns from the last meeting that were discussed, and also reflects some of the discussions, uh, that I had with Andrew, and that the actual owner of the property had with Andrew and Leslie, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So I'll have Jamie go through, uh, the technical points of the plan, we're here to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, please.
Jamie Anderson, Site Civil Engineer with RJ O'Connell Associates for the applicant, um, just here to present this revised preliminary subdivision plan as we just previously discussed. Um, so basically, the main changes to the plan, um, the previous plan you saw was a cul-de-sac-style subdivision plan, uh, off of Union Street, um, with three curb cuts on Union Street itself, two driveways and the, and the curb cut proposed drive. As you can see on the plan in front of you now, uh, we are proposing a one-way, uh, street cutting all the way through the site from Union Street down to, uh, Washington Street Extension. That's a twenty-foot, uh, roadway, uh, tentatively, uh, entitled Wabbska Way, excuse me.
What way?
Wabbska Way, which is on the, uh...
Approved.
I think it's, it's too close to Nobbska.
Is that a vote?
I think it's a whale.
Say what?
I think it just means whale.
It's slim pickings on that list, just something like, I mean, sorry.
That's set in stone.
Not set in stone at this point, we're, that's what we're calling it.
Got it.
Uh, again, it's five buildable lots, all five lots will have access off of Wabbska Way, so there'll be no, there'll be no curb cuts along Union Street any longer. Uh, as far as utility infrastructure, um, all the, uh, water and sewer mains will continue to be brought off of Union Street, uh, as per the previous plan, however, we are proposing now to have a water main cut all the way through the site to loop, to, uh, provide additional redundancies and additional pressure for the dead end on Washington Street there.
Perfect.
Um, we do have to relocate a hydrant at this drive right here.
Yeah.
So, we have no issue doing that, of course, just to get that driveway as close as we can to that other property line. Uh, we won't be asking for some waivers similar to subdivisions of this size, including the width of the roadway, the width of the right-of-way itself, um, lack of sidewalks, et cetera, which we can handle, I can get a full list on the definitive stage. Uh, pretty much one other thing I just wanna talk about is the schematic grading, at this time, we don't have a definitive, uh, drainage design, um, but it is the owner's request, uh, at this time, to, uh, to provide, uh, in lieu of bituminous pavement, we do wanna use, uh, shells, I think I mentioned it at the last hearing. Um, so, like I mentioned, there's, there's no stormwater management system designed at this point, uh, but we will be using best management practices. Um, you know, we're considering grass swales, bioretention areas, et cetera, um, something that we will obviously go through with our submission to the Conservation Commission, because we are under their jurisdiction clearly with the wetlands, and as you can see on the plan, uh, all the buffer zones that we will be, uh, within. But this time, that's pretty much all I had for you, those are the main changes on the plan, and open for any questions.
Sure, board members, go ahead.
I know one of the things we brought up at the last meeting, um, was that there may be one too many lots being crammed in here, given how bizarre two of them are, and how the hundred-foot, fifty-foot, and twenty-five-foot basically kill a couple of these lots. Um, or reduces the building envelope down to a ridiculous size. And I'm concerned about the density, I really appreciate you bringing the road all the way through, I assume that road is going over the current layout, which sort of wanders back to Washington Street Extension, you're not creating a new layout for that, it's just following what's already cut for that way?
No, so it's actually, uh, it doesn't quite follow the, the meandering route of the existing gravel road, it actually cuts closer to the property over here, so...
You can see how it meanders quite a bit.
Yeah.
It travels through here.
Right, I knew there was a bad bend.
This bend here, so we're avoiding that bend, we're putting it more straight in, like back towards this property line.
Yeah.
Clearing the wetlands as far as we can, not clearing...
Yes.
Careful.
We didn't hear that.
Getting closer, away from the wetlands as far as we can, so...
All right, question for you, I think, how many lots did you come in with the last time?
Five.
And I think we, at least I mentioned that I thought five was too many lots, given all the craziness of the shape of the existing lot, that road, trying to get frontage off of it, I appreciate coming in from Washington and going out the other side, or coming in from Union and going out in extension, but I thought there were meant, too many lots, and too strangely shaped lots, which is going to create, from a development point of view, a very odd grouping for another board's consideration. And I thought you might be better off having four larger lots, where you have a little bit more flexibility on how to place things, a little bit more regulary, regular, don't get so messy that become really weird, the way that things are gonna be placed, especially in the old historic district. So, I was a little concerned about the density, and then we had also talked about not having a secondary dwelling, I didn't know if you'd had that conversation, because otherwise, we're still looking at ten houses that would be out of character, so you just have multiple things to consider here. But that's why I was concerned about the density of having five lots with two dwellings on each lot, so, that's just me.
Yeah, that's understood, and, and, you know, obviously, we've, um, you know, four lots is something that I think we're gonna look at again, but I don't, at this point, uh, the applicant definitely wants five lots, and at this point, the applicant expects to have second dwellings potentially.
So he wants everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just saying.
And I don't, and, and to be honest, I don't think it's necessarily, they may look like odd-shaped lots, but, um, I don't think it's really gonna hinder development that much. That twenty-five-foot buffer, uh, barely touches those lots, those back lots, and the fifty-foot doesn't invade that, that much, so, they'll be able to put plenty on there, I think, especially on a seven thousand square foot lot, five thousand square foot zone. So, okay.
Mr. Mark?
If you had to do it with a forty-foot layout, how many square feet less would that leave in, then would you lose any lot?
We came in with a forty-foot layout last time, I think we...
I did?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, the last one had five lots, a forty-foot layout that didn't require any waivers, I don't think so, on that, that particular plan.
That, that's correct, we had a...
Well, that's true.
No, they didn't...
No, it didn't, we did that...
Let's, let's...
We, we had a very specific discussion at the last meeting where we, the board expressed that we wanted to get a through road, but, uh, this has not been tested for a forty-foot through road, so...
This plan.
No, I, I'm not saying, I want the twenty-foot through road, I like this plan way better than the other plan.
Yeah.
But there is a value to getting the reduction, that's my point.
Right.
In the forty feet to the twenty-two.
Right.
That wasn't...
In the through road, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I mean, there's a value to the applicant.
Well, I, well, I agree, and not, you know, not to mention the fact that we'd have a tough time with the forty-foot through road because of the wetland, and that's really, that's really the issue for us.
Right, they, they made the five lots with the forty-foot layout and the cul-de-sac, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Well, not to be argumentative, but that cul-de-sac wasn't, it would be waivers involved in that cul-de-sac, correct?
I don't think so.
I think we could've, you know, I think, I think we could've pulled it off without waivers on that plan.
But I was, I was just, I think, especially, I wasn't arguing that.
Yeah, Tom is a different issue, but yeah.
I mean, we looked at different options. The other option was to keep the cul-de-sac and then have the through road as an easement. You know, so, but I think ultimately, the through road is cleaner. Cleaner with the one-way and.
Can we, can we let staff have their own?
And there is, you know, there is expectation that we talked about, that there is certain rights granted, that it wouldn't necessarily become a public way, but there would be rights granted to the public to cross over it and other things, so. Which I think is a definite benefit, so.
Did you have anything else?
Way better than Washington, starting at the beginning.
Anyone else on the board? Andrew, I'll go to you, and then I'm going to come back in a minute.
I just, you know, for, for the record here, we, I don't see the plan showing any, we talked about a five-foot easement along Washington, no, Union Street. So is that off or just not on this?
Just not on this. I mean, I think that's something that we anticipate.
Okay. Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think, we talked about in-town bike path contribution, which is part of this. We talked about a zoning change either to R5 or ROH, which would be part of our warrant article that you're going to be discussing in October.
Yep.
So, which I think there was agreement on that.
Yeah.
And there's, the one issue is one lot has 40 feet of frontage that, so there might be a need to file a pre-plan for that, but overall, there's support for the residential, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, this is going to be, this is really going to freeze the zoning in place for us anyway. I mean, obviously, if necessary, we could discuss, you know, some of the uses that are currently available in the site that probably aren't really useful to this applicant anyway, so.
Right. So, that's, and maybe Maiden Lane, we were looking at some names of streets. There were some names that, that used to be around that are, that are not, no longer. But I think, I do think that list of street names is getting.
Been poor.
Getting kind of bad. So, anyway, maybe we'll have some suggestions.
Yeah. Board members, anything else? Just a few things I've got for you at this point. I'm going to ask staff to kind of chime in on a few things. Andrew, any thought about pedestrian or bike path easement through on the roadway as well, too, that runs through it?
We talked, we talked about it not, it not being separate, but integrated as part of the roadway, so that.
Yeah, okay.
Pedestrian, it's such a fairly short run that pedestrians could walk down it, bicyclists could walk down it.
Right.
It wouldn't be advertised, per se, as a, as a, you know, through road or anything, but I think some people would know about it over time.
And, yeah, because I want to make sure that access is secured somehow, so, and that, I would agree with you, I think having it as integrated with the roadway system you're putting in place is fine. I think the concern I have here, too, and I'm going to ask you guys again, I think as time moves on that, because this is going to be a private roadway, correct?
Yes.
When everything's, okay. Do you think with, because I'm a little skeptical on this one, if they max this out with 10 properties on there, and this begins, the Antuckas are notorious over time for catching on about how to cut through things. Do you think Shell is going to do that? Does there need to be a maintenance plan in place to address that, or are we just better off going to some type of hard pack service, like a chip seal or an asphalt or something on that ilk? I just have that concern if they're going to, if they're going to max the property use. I mean, I like what I see. This is much better than where we were at our last meeting, but I do want to raise the issue and, you know, like I said, when staff looks at these things, they see how the whole thing is moving. So I just want to maybe throw that out for you, just to see what your thoughts are here.
Well, you know, we have some time before the final. I mean, we had suggested, you know, maybe looking at some other things like, you know, brick, like Martins Lane, or, you know, whether or not that would be something to look at or not. There would have to be aprons on either side where it intersects with the pavement.
Sure.
But I, we had some talk about, you know, it not, it looking a little bit different than the other roads, but the maintenance would be, you know, there's maintenance and noise issues with Shell that, you know, maybe you want to take a look at.
Right, and that, thank you, because that helps me define that a little bit better as well, too, that maybe, I think with staff, they're correct, you may want to look at some alternative services besides Shell.
Yeah, we'll do that, and I think we'll eventually iron it out at the definitive plate.
Yeah, but I do like the idea, though, that you're trying to give a slightly different characteristic than just a through roadway structure.
Yeah, I think we'll want that, too, yeah.
Something that's got a little bit more resiliency for the future as well, too, I think, I think would be good.
So bicycles, Barry.
Pardon?
It's going to be a bike cut through, people going to work down there, I mean, bikes don't like gravel, they don't like shell, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, what's going to end up happening? It is, so.
Yeah, but I think, I think if they're, it's like I said, if they're going to go and exercise full flexibility on this thing with 10 houses on it, I think we need to look a little bit closer at that. Again, you know, I'm not looking at three years, five years down the road, I'm thinking 20, 30, 40, what, because we only have one shot at this. What's it going to look like, and how is it going to function, and, you know, just like with other things, you heard Williams Lane, oh, it was a sleeky little residential area, and, you know, now they've got a lot of traffic going through it. I want to at least make sure we're kind of at least raising that issue a little bit.
Right, okay.
Okay? Thanks. Anything else from the board? Anything else from staff? We all good here? All right, do you have a clear, pretty clear sense of where we're all heading and?
Absolutely.
Any, any final thoughts for us?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we'll come back with a definitive plan rather shortly, as soon as we can, I think.
Great, so what would be appropriate at this point is? Okay, well, that's all right, it's myself, Mr. Lowell, and you, we're going to be.
What are we, just continuing?
No, we won't be continuing at this point, there has, there has to be a letter.
We have to endorse.
Could I, could I suggest, you know, that if you're, if you're ready, that you would vote to approve the preliminary plan?
Yep.
With the items that we discussed?
Right.
And authorize the chair to sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
Write that motion.
All right, the motion is made. You're not going to second it, are you?
No.
I'll second it for discussion, that's fine.
A discussion?
Yep, go ahead.
We're not getting into the restriction on the secondary dwelling or five lots versus four lots, right?
But we can in the, in the main plan.
When the final plan comes in, we can still go after that.
Yep.
Correct.
I'm not changing my mind on some of this stuff.
Okay.
I mean.
Just so you know.
Joe pointed out, this 20-foot thing, I never met you before until this thing, just so you know, not that that matters, but this 20-foot thing is new. It's sort of like, we slid this in, kind of like an MRD thing, but it's still a regular subdivision, you know, so you don't have to go through all this, you know, stuff you have to do with MRD, but we did it up on Cliff Road, and it's better for the public than having these big 40-foot layouts, even though you don't see the 40 feet, it, this is kind of small stuff that helps make something more Niantucket. Like Barry's saying, and I agree with his point, we don't, we don't want something this sort of sensitive to become what it shouldn't be. You know, and also, you have to also think about the town, like what's happened in Woodbury Lane that was built in the early 80s, all of a sudden, everybody wants to take it by the town. I'll be like 78 years old, and all of a sudden, we're going to be taking, what is it called? Matri? No, it's Wobbsco.
Wobbsco.
We're going to be naming a steamship vessel Wobbsco and.
Buying something else.
I mean, someday, it could be taken, or be on the takings list in 30 years, and we don't want it to be something that the town says, well, we don't want to take that because it needs all this work.
Right.
I'm just thinking ahead, okay? Because this is, you know, I remember this being discussed, we talked about this the last meeting, for some alternative route, blah, 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 so we just need to get it right, so, that's all. So I made the, did I?
You've made the motion, I'm seconding it for, and we're into discussion phase right now, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I don't mean to, but I think it would be helpful in the definitive plan stage to show the surrounding density. And I want to tell you that, I mean, I have no problem with what the proposal is. This is an area that.
It's all dense.
That is dense. It's in the town district, and again, I'm going to ask board members to be careful about setting arbitrary limits that aren't called foreign zoning. You have zoning which calls out minimum lot sizes, this is not.
Correct.
This is not, you know, to arbitrarily say it should be something that doesn't, that's really a different way of approaching things than some of the other boards.
I understand, your point is well taken, sir.
I'm concerned about density.
Mr. Chairman, density is handled through our zoning bylaw and through putting areas, if this was intended to be a different dense area, should be in R10, R20, there are higher densities, but I don't think the board should get into a habit of setting arbitrary density limits that aren't written down and aren't coded in our bylaw.
Well, we've done it all the time. We prevent people from having secondary dwellings, there's all kinds of stuff.
Secondary dwellings are.
I think, I think you and Mr. Vors can have a philosophical discussion about this later at this point, because that, I can hear that going back and forth, so let's, let's kind of stick to the application that's before us right now.
You've, you've drawn this plan up for R5, where we're going to, which is what we're likely going to.
ROH, yeah, I mean, pretty much.
Yeah, so it's already, yeah, because we, because the district that it's in is leaving, so, okay.
Yeah, well, and lot sizes are similar, anyway.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Yep, exactly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, ayes happy unanimously, three to all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for working with us as well, too, appreciate it. No problem. Board members, you have a number of ZBA cases before you at this point, is there anything you want to chat about?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Take some water.
Last time. What's going on?
Didn't we already take a vote on this?
Yes, the board took a vote. They did not ask for the relief and alternative, which is what we told them we should do.
The.
Leslie.
Board took a vote on 20 Cherry Street at the last hearing. It was continued at the ZBA, it wasn't opened, so your recommendation will carry forward to the September meeting on Thursday.
Yep. Was there?
The key on that was to apply the powers test.
Right.
From the change, from what the ZBA had allowed with, which was the greenhouse into storage for the tents, which is different.
But they didn't ask for, unfortunately, they did not amend their plan, and ask for 133, 13933A relief.
That's not in the notice.
We're supposed to do that, so.
I don't call that coming from the board.
Go ahead.
As of this morning, I actually have discussed with the attorney, who's just in the room, for saying the applicant, that they're going to continue on their work and amend their application to reflect or request a social form of allegiance.
There you go.
I don't know how many times I could say it.
Was there anything else? Are you satisfied with this one, though? Is there anything else on the ZBA? All right, so let's move along. Last thing before us at this point, unless there's any public comment, and I'm not saying anything, there's an appointment to fill the planning board seat vacancy that was from Sylvia Howard at this point. We've received applications from Mr. Markins, or Mr. Borchardt, who have sat on this board for a while, and it's going to be up to this board to make a decision about who they feel would be comfortable with filling that seat in the interim until the next election in April. It would be, it's also, has to come before the board of selectmen as well, too, which will be the meeting on Wednesday.
Just for.
All in on breaking news.
Just for clarification, you, the board of selectmen is asking for your recommendation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But you will jointly vote at the Wednesday meeting, so you all will need to.
So we got to go to the Wednesday, this is going to change.
You, you, you three and, and Mr. McLaughlin and I, the two applicants, of course, if you want to be there. I don't have the agenda.
Plan on being there at 6:00?
Oh, it's at the end of the agenda.
Oh, it's at the end of the agenda?
I think so, but I could be wrong. We'll let you know tomorrow.
Can you, can you confirm, can you confirm that with us? But that meeting, it is scheduled as a joint planning board.
Right, and we're posted.
Right.
Can you ask them to move it to the beginning of the meeting at a courtesy, since we only have to come for that, instead of sitting through all that stuff before we get to it?
I think staff just.
And I could be confused, because I have several agenda items of interest on Wednesday.
So with all due appropriate, staff will let you know and try to work on it, okay. But it is inherent upon this board at this point to have a recommendation under which to do it. So, short of taking a vote, I'm not sure quite how to deal with that, because it's a little open-ended.
I just have a comment. I think both are eminently.
I agree.
Qualified to sit on the board, you know, I've bugged you for years to get on the board. And I think they're both well-qualified. But I, I don't know how to, it's, it's like Solomon.
I agree.
Where do you, where do you cut it? So the only thing that would work for me at the moment, I think we'll probably have another vacancy soon, but I, hopefully, will, is to go with the one who has more seniority at this point. So my recommendation would be for Joe.
To be a full member.
To be a full member, I mean, it just, it sort of puts me in a bad position, because I want you both on.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Like the bike committee.
Yep, I, and I would, I concur with Linda, this has not been an easy decision. You both have served this board very well, and I'm thrilled that both of you have, are on here at this point.
Yep.
I've had 15 years' worth of alternates, so believe me, the two, the two of you are really, I'm glad to have you both here, from a personal standpoint, and this is not an easy decision to make, by any stretch of the imagination, because you both really have put your heart and soul into it, and that, that's appreciated. I have to agree at this point, I think the defining moment here is really just a matter of longevity and nothing else, and I, you know, I defer to Mr. Markingshaw at this stage.
I would concur with both of you, I mean, you got this, it's nice to have two qualified candidates as alternates. When we have somebody not here, we need a special permit, supermajority situation comes up a lot, whether somebody resigned or not, this is the first time this has happened when I'm here. When did the last time this happened?
That was when Sylvia and.
The situation with.
I forget who it was who left, but it was between Sylvia and.
Mark Biel in 2000, Mark Biel left, I.
Right, Sylvia Mayor, Erin Markovich.
So, so we've got one year, and there's going to be an election anyway, so, no, it's not even a year, so.
Seven months.
This is like an interim full member, just to keep things clean and simple.
Correct.
And, so my recommendation would be Joe as well.
I just get to come to that, you get to go to plan into the plan.
Oh, that's good, thank you.
That's right.
But anyway, well. Before, before, before you, before you count all your eggs at this point, I need both of you and my planning board members, as I've said, to definitely show up at that meeting on Wednesday of this week. And staff will get back to us in terms of the time to do it. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just checked the agenda while we were sitting here.
Yep.
And it's near the beginning, not near the end.
There you go, so.
I'll get through it again.
So plan on being there at 6 o'clock, boys and girls.
Is the hospital on there?
Formal recommendation, I'll make a formal recommendation for Joe Markling, due to his longevity and his service to the planning commission.
Planning board.
Planning board.
Planning board, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes happy unanimously, thank you, gentlemen, so much.
I like the sound of the vote.
Anything else that has to come before this board?
voting will be adjourned at 9:47.
Great, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Carl and Joe, did you get our recent case, Brock's Court?